Welcome, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get called to order here at 1:00 on the dot. We're going to start out in a minute with staff presentation. I believe it's 20 some odd slides. Before we do that, just a couple of housekeeping matters. The lights on the microphones in the room have to be green for it to pick up the audio, so no one will hear you outside this room unless your light is green. So it applies to us and anyone that comes up to the podium. Just make sure it's green. If it's not, press the button that says "push" and make sure it turns green before you start speaking. Beyond that, I don't want to mess with the system they have here for fear that it may do something with the audio. So Commissioner Pritchett has a stopwatch app on her phone. We're going to give everyone that's coming up for public comment three minutes. I may ask for folks that think they need more than three minutes who are specifically referenced in the staff presentation. I may ask for a motion to extend it to some slightly longer time to allow those folks who are specifically referenced to get through the material they have to, but otherwise it's going to be three minutes a pop unless, of course, there's a motion made to change that otherwise. So with that, Mr. Bate, I don't know who's going to be handling the PowerPoint?
Yeah, Jill will be handling the PowerPoint. I'll be making the presentation. And so, good afternoon, Commissioners. Our workshop today is on CARES funding. And let me go over a little bit about the agenda. We'll be making the staff presentation and hopefully answer any questions that you may have about the presentation or the information we present. We've got a lot of information to present to you. And after that, because it's a workshop and we are seeking board direction, you need to listen to public comments before the board makes any motions on taking any action, which you can then do in Part III, is what's in the agenda, Board Discussion and Action. I spoke with our county attorney, Ian Bentley, and she said that that's how we would need to proceed. And so we'll try to go through all the information. And let me start by talking about what outcomes and board decision points we're going to be looking for. The first one is after we explain what we're doing, what funding we have, what we've been doing with it, where we are with it, we're going to ask for your direction after you hear the public comment on distribution of currently unallocated funds. We'll be explaining to you how we've obligated funds, and perhaps obligated is not the best word in some of those cases, but I will go into detail to let you know exactly where we are and why, because you do have some rather significant discretion in how we move from here to the end of the year with this funding, which we need to encumber and spend, but I'll explain that in detail as we move forward before December 31st. Number two, I'll be seeking board direction. I believe that this is what the board will want to see, to require and authorize me as county manager to execute either grant agreements with anyone we enter into a grant with, especially those over $50,000 or more. And that can either be through an agreement or an interlocal agreement, if it's a government agency, to require them to acknowledge that we have a right to audit them relating to these funds, for them that they will be participating in any audits that occur, which is a Treasury guideline requirement, and provide for clawback provisions. Those provisions being twofold. One, that if it's deemed that any of these funds that are allocated through a grant are determined to be not eligible by the Treasury or the Office of Inspector General or an audit that occurs, that they have to reimburse the county. And secondly, another clawback provision, if the board so chooses, and we have that drafted by the county attorney's office already, and we've used it in the interlocal agreements, is that if they receive any of these entities, which are called subrecipients, which I'll talk about during the presentation, if any of them receive funding that covers the same costs that they are required then to reimburse the county for those dollars, that way they're not double-dipping for any particular dollars. The third area would be, I'd ask for you to authorize me as the county manager to transfer funds during December between programs to maximize benefits, including all necessary budget change requests. And that's because during December, as you'll see in the various programs that we have, if we don't utilize the funds, and they could be utilized in another program or whatever the board may approve, that I need the flexibility to be able to do that. So I would ask the board for permission. At least you consider that. I want to tell you those things on the front end, so that when we go through the presentation, you can be thinking about that, because that's really where we're going to be looking for the decision-making from the board after we hear the public comment and you have your discussion. Okay. So where are we with Coronavirus Relief Fund? As you know, we were provided $105 million that was allocated to the county. And the reason we were allocated that money is because we were a local government, we are a local government with a population that exceeded $500,000. We had to make the request to the Treasury. Treasury acknowledged it and then provided that funding to the board. That funding must be utilized to fund expenses that are directly related to COVID-19. And there are multiple guidelines and FAQs that have been issued by the Treasury Department, one of the latest being on September 2, 2020, and the Treasury Office of Inspector General on September 21. And actually, there was another one just last week from the OIG that also gave us additional guidance. Now, in addition to that $105 million, let me also say that we have received, and you're going to see some of that in what we're going to be discussing, additional funding. For example, even at, I believe, this coming Tuesday's board meeting, Ian is going to be talking about some of the additional funding Housing and Human Services have received. Received $5.4 million through there, which is CARES-related funding for COVID-19. Transit Services received about $18 million. Fire Rescue, about $462,000. The Sheriff's Office received about $177,000. And Valkyria Airport actually got some as well, $30,000. So that's in addition to the $105 million that we received. And I'll be referencing some of that information as we go through. Now, when CARES funding was provided back in the, several months ago, back in March, and that started, it provides that payment of money from those funds can only be used for, quote, "necessary expenditures" that are due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19. So that was a very significant limitation. They had to be not accounted for in a budget that was approved, that the board had approved and was in place on March 27 of 2020. And any expenses had to be for costs that were incurred during the period of March 1, 2020 through December 30, 2020. Those guidelines, those requirements, have been expounded upon by Treasury in the guidance that they have provided. And they've made some significant changes over time, and I'm going to go over that in detail with you as well, because that can impact how you may decide you want to spend the remaining funding. Necessary under the Treasury guidance means the expenditure is reasonably necessary for its intended use in the reasonable judgment of the government officials responsible for spending the fund payments. That gives this board very significant discretion as to how, from a policy perspective, you believe these funds are best allocated. Now, you've approved a variety of things and programs that we currently have in place. And part, I think, of our job today is to make you aware of how those dollars have been funded and utilized. And we're going to go to that in rather significant detail. It also has to be due to expenditures that must be used for actions taken in response to the public health emergency. Those are in two general areas: addressing medical or public health needs, and two, in response to secondary order effects for the emergency. Those include economic support to individuals and families, which the board has multiple programs for, or if it was due to people suffering from employment or business interruption due to COVID-19, and we have small business programs. And you'll see some other areas that we're going to talk about that today as well, and things that you can cover. Now, not accounted for in the budget, that what was not in your budget on March 27 of 2020, what that means is that the cost cannot be lawful funded from within our budget, and the cost has to be substantially different from use, from any expected use of funds in that budget. What does that mean? That has also undergone extraordinarily significant change in terms of what you can do, and I'm going to highlight that for you in a couple of minutes. But the one thing that is still in place from the beginning to now is when it relates to government, local government, whatever local government it is, these funds cannot be utilized to, as revenue replacement. That's not a permissible use of the funds. That's not to say that you can't give it to individuals, families, or small businesses. The answer is yes. And that was a big part of our small business program. If people could show us revenue loss from year to year, and it was due to COVID-19, that was a qualifying event that helped in the $10,000 grants. What we can't do is we can't use it for ourselves or any other government to replace lost revenues, let's say, sales tax or what other revenue loss that we may have had, either directly or indirectly. For example, you can't reimburse someone for utility payments if those utility payments are coming back to pay the county for obligations that they have to us, because that's considered revenue replacement. And we have not done any of that. Now, there is very significant, as I mentioned, subsequent Treasury guidelines that really address these issues in more detail. And that's going to be something that is going to impact us, I think, and the board in its decision-making this afternoon. The Office Inspector General has put out FAQs, various questions and their responses to those questions that are going to be very helpful. First of all, OIG is responsible for the monitoring and dispersment and the use of the funds and the recovery of those funds. And what basically that means is that they have an obligation and the right to audit any grant recipients, people who receive these funds. And that includes us as a primary recipient. As the definition shows you, any government that received funding, as we have, that was over 500,000 people in the jurisdiction, those governments are considered primary recipients because the money came directly from Treasury to the board. It did not go through the state. So we are among, I think, 11 or 12 counties that received that funding directly. All the other counties have had to go through the state and are subject to the...
(noise)
All right. Yeah. So we're a prime recipient. Now, there's another definition that's important, and that's subrecipients. Subrecipients are any entities to which we, as the prime recipient, issue a contract, a grant, a loan, any direct payment or transfer of $50,000 or more. There are many subrecipients that we already have. For example, we've got four charter officers, the sheriff's office, the tax collector, supervisor of elections, and the clerk are all subrecipients. We have nine municipalities that have received or are receiving $50,000 or more. They will be subrecipients. We have a variety of contracted services, any vendor that we've done business with that relate to, you know, any items we have purchased, PPE, et cetera, through CARES, those are all subrecipients. And other agencies, like the school board, hospitals, nonprofits, if the board does something with the zoo, for example, those will be subrecipients. Under the OIG guidelines that have been issued, any CARES relief funding that the prime recipient gives is going to be subject to an audit. They may also audit subrecipients, subrecipients being those who receive $50,000 or more when they choose to audit us. Now, what's important for the board to know is that when a subrecipient is audited and there's a finding of a problem, i.e., they determine that that funding that was provided or how it was utilized by the subrecipient is not consistent with CARES funding or the guidelines or the statutory requirements, they don't go after the subrecipient. They go, they come to the board for reimbursement, because we are the prime recipient. That's one of the very important reasons why this board, I believe, has already, all the municipalities and the school board have entered into interlocal agreements with clawback provisions, as I've requested, if the board will give us the authority to do it for everyone else who's a subrecipient moving forward, to indicate that they have to pay us back, because we're going to have to pay the Treasury back at some future time. We are also, as the prime recipient, we are responsible for documenting everything that supports that the payments have been done, made properly, and they've been used for appropriate purposes. We are utilizing a third party, Tetra Tech, who we already use for FEMA reimbursements and provides consulting services to us. We brought them on board to do reviews, and they have been conducting all the reviews of the documentation that we obtained to assure that we have the appropriate documentation that Treasury is going to require, as well as evaluation of any requests that come in. Do they fall within the guidelines that I'm talking about today? While that is the case in the FAQs, the OIG has already told us and all other prime recipients that we can use that party and we can use CARES funding, and we are, to reimburse them for the services they provide us. However, any decisions they made, they make, do not insulate us. We are still primarily responsible, so that if there is anything that Treasury says, "No, no, this is no good. You can't rely on the third-party evaluation that occurred," we are still going to be responsible for the payment back to Treasury if it's determined that we have to do that. In addition, any small business assistance that's given, we, as the primary recipient, the prime recipient, are obligated to maintain all the documents and the financial records that prove that the business, small business that received the grant, were impacted by the emergency and are eligible for CFR funds. Now, we have used a rather robust program that we purchased to do these online applications. And so I feel very comfortable. We've done that. We've been very good partners with the clerk's office, who has also reviewed, after staff has reviewed internally, what we've done. And I'll be reporting on what we've accomplished and where we stand with that as we move forward. Now, as everything that I've described so far, you might imagine, and I know I've had discussions with a variety of people, about, you know, spending, and how those $105 million are allocated and how do you spend. And I will tell you, there was a time we were concerned about whether or not we would be in a position within the timeframe that was provided. Can we allocate all those funds appropriately under CARES? And there was concern from a staff perspective, I know the budget office did, and I shared it, and so did the county attorney's office. We even spoke with the clerk's office about it, is are you going to be able to spend that money appropriately with the appropriate documentation that you need? We were helped in that regard by Treasury and by the OIG, because they recognized, after hearing from a lot of governments, of the difficulties and the challenges with the administrative requirements that were set forth, they came forward and said, "We're going to give you some administrative accommodations in terms of what will be acceptable to us when we come in and audit you for what you are doing." And so those accommodations will make it easier for you and how you, the burdens that you carry, to show that your allocation and your distribution of funds are going to be acceptable to us. The first one they did was in the area of public safety. And what they said there was that, as an administrative accommodation, we can presume that public health and public safety employees meet what they call the substantially dedicated test, unless I, as the chief executive officer or an equivalent to me, determines that the specific circumstances indicate otherwise. Well, that is rather broad. And basically, let me use some other words there. What that is saying is that if you are a sheriff deputy, a corrections officer, a firefighter, a dispatcher, payroll and benefit costs that were incurred from the period of March 1, 2020 through December 30, 2020 qualify for CARES funding, and the board can dedicate funds to that. That is rather broad and gives you significant discretion of the utilization of funds moving forward. We do not have to demonstrate that, or substantiate that the public health or public safety employee, any individual functions were substantially dedicated to the emergency. That is presumed. And as a prime recipient, what we're required to do is maintain records and documentation supporting what the payroll amount is, and that that amount was reimbursed from the CARE relief funds fund. And so that is a very broad opportunity, and I'll talk to you more in detail about that a little later, when I go through the costs and the programs that the board has in place, and then what you might choose to consider doing. Administrative accommodations were also made by Treasury and OIG when it, addressing issues relating to the safe reopening of schools. Now, as you'll recall, staff came even before this occurred, staff came and said, "Hey, would you be willing to, the board, would you like to reimburse schools like we're doing for municipalities?" And the board said yes. And so we invited the schools to submit any reimbursement requests that they had for PPE and other areas that would qualify for funding to us. And we processed all of what they are submitting. We are processing that through Tetra Tech. When the administrative accommodation came through, what it provides for is that in two areas, which are in-school learning or at-home e-learning, that in those two areas, we, as the prime recipient, have the ability to award up to $500 per student for any, either kind of, for safe reopening of schools, any kind of expense that the school can put forward. And the schools would not be obligated to provide us any documentation. There's a presumption that you could do that. Now, I will tell you that I had the opportunity to speak with Dr. Mullins early on and indicated how supportive this board was of helping the schools. And we asked at that time that they participate, like all municipalities were, in submitting us the specific requests, from a transparency perspective, et cetera, that you tell us what you specifically want, we will submit it to Tetra Tech, and then we will process that. They have done that. And I know they're here today, in case the board wants to go over it in detail, when I show you what's happening with, where we are with the schools. But let me tell you that with schools enrollment of 69,800 students, of which 61,900 are regular public schools, there's about 258 in alternative programs, and there's about 7,431 that are in charter schools. That equates to almost $34.9 million. What the schools have done is submitted to us, and we'll be talking about that a few slides from now, about $7.8 million of reimbursement requests, which we have said obligated, but I need to clarify, it's not really obligated, i.e., they, you know, we've only reimbursed them so far, and Jill has the specific numbers for a million plus. But we are, we've told them that we believe that what they have submitted to us, the board can approve up to that amount. That would be that total $7.8 million. But we'll talk more about that a little bit later when we talk about that. And what we've done for municipalities, the schools, anyone else who is one of our partners, that the board has indicated we could move forward, the charter officers, we have allocated funding that, to the degree that we have done that and told them that we would move forward with it, consistent with the programs that the board approved in May. What were those programs? Those programs were for medical expenses, such as antibody testing, hospital support, mental health services, public health expenses, payroll expenses for public safety, compliance with public health measures, telework, Families First, sanitation at the jail, social distancing, the school support, and then economic support programs that we've done in the areas of individuals, rent assistance, utility assistance, small business assistance, PPEs to small business, all those kinds of programs. And now I think we're about ready. And so those are the programs that you'll see: public health program, medical expenditure, public health compliance, public employee reassignment, housing and rental mortgage assistance, COVID-related emergencies, our housing utility security deposit program, the food stability program, which has been very successful, and Ian's here to talk more about that, and the small business support program, which we are also, you know, you may recall, the board gave an initial $10 million. And, you know, I'll be talking, giving you some more details in a few minutes about how we think we can actually put some more money into the program if the board so chooses from where we are. So now, before we get into those specific programs, which is going to be a couple of slides, what I did want to share was what's happening with 2-1-1 and positivity in Brevard. And so you can see that, you know, we've had in Brevard a little over 11,600 cases, 375 deaths. We have a chart that shows what the positive COVID cases have been since the early March through the present. And then you can see in the bottom for 2-1-1 in terms of how many calls they've received, 37,700-plus, and what areas, just so you know, people were concerned about. 5,900 calls relating to housing, 2,291 relate to food, variety relating to utilities, and then miscellaneous in different areas. So how did, how has the money been distributed thus far? And I hope that you'll all recall that the programs that I outlined, you have all approved items that were budgeted in the first column in this particular page of the PowerPoint. And that's how we distributed the $105 million. However, all that money has not been spent, and some of it was placed in reserve, as you see from there. There was $21 million that was in unobligated public health and safe dollars that we had initially. But what we have, quote-unquote, incurred, that is, things that we have told other agencies that are reimbursable. And like I said, there are some areas, like the schools, that we have included in that column, although, you know, the board, you know, they haven't made the purchases yet. And the board could change that if you so chose, that you don't think we're going down the right path, because ultimately it is the board's decision how to allocate. to allocate the remaining funds that we are. But I will tell you that in the area that's remaining, which is in the final column, there's a couple of areas in public health and public health compliance that we actually are prepared to expend if the Board approves it, additional dollars that weren't in what we initially asked you in May. Because in May, we really didn't know how much we would do in these various areas or how much we would spend in the other areas. And Jill is available to go over some of those details, but a lot of those deal with public health compliance, deal with what I've mentioned, the schools, some of it deals with reimbursements we think are appropriate for the Sheriff's Office based on what they've expended thus far, but we can go over that in greater detail when, in a few slides. So let me, let me first start by talking about an important area that the Board has, you know, said they were very sensitive to and remain very sensitive to, and that is, how do you support the community? And so what you see here is $13.8 million in community support in various programs that the Board has approved. Community block grant programs, low-income housing programs, 1.1 million, the community block grant program has 2.1 in it, the Coronavirus Relief Fund has 1.6 million in, there's another block grant of $408,000 in it, individual assistance that we're providing through the rental program and the utilities programs, has $4 million in it, and the food stability program had $4 million and has four. That gives us 13.8 million of how much is being spent thus far. And you're going to see in a couple of slides, we're going to be making some suggested, does the Board want to allocate additional funds in that area, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. In terms of COVID testing and PPE status, which is very important, we want to let you know what we've been doing. And so we've, we've tested in Brevard through the Health Department and through some of our partners, which are, you know, Health First and Parish Medical Center, 126,900 COVID-related tests have occurred in the last several months. These are not all the tests in Brevard, but those are the ones that we've tracked through emergency management, through a variety of sources. And what we've also done is distributed a lot of PPE. You can see it's almost 1.3 million pairs of gloves, over 2 million masks, 36,000 face shields, 287,000-plus gowns, hand sanitizer, packages of wipes. All of these items have been distributed to a variety of sources. Who is it that we've distributed it to? We've distributed based on requests that go into our emergency management department, and we have staff over there. We've provided it to assisted living facilities, to hospitals, to other healthcare providers, to different health, excuse me, first responders, to non-healthcare providers, and we've done it by facility type as well, and you can see how much we've given to each of those facilities in this particular slide. In addition to that, we've also paid for PPE expenses by a variety of agencies. You can see for the Board, we spent about $988,000 for PPE. The Charter Offices, 253,000. The School Board reimbursing them for either through directly giving them the PPE or reimbursement for PPE that they had previously purchased, over $1 million. The Cities are at 922,000. Small Businesses, 441,000. You remember, we have that program that the Board allocated, I believe, $500,000 to. And then Nursing Homes and Healthcare Providers, a little over 1.1 million. Other secondary effect programs, and that is, you know, how do we help our community? We've done that through individual assistance, and you can see the applications that we've received thus far, is a little over 1,400. How many have come from unincorporated areas? It was 64%. And that's higher than you might expect, but what you need to understand is that the major cities have their own programs through CDBG funding, et cetera. So that's why that's as pretty high as much as it is, and that we've given, the average amount of assistance was about $3,752. That is going up, and that we believe that we are going to spend at the rate we were doing it, about $4.476 million in that kind of assistance. In terms of small business, and I'm going to also tell you what we think we could do and additional dollars you might want to put into that program moving forward. Small Business PPEs, we've distributed a little over 2,226 different kits. We've received applications from over 1,600 businesses. We have actually paid out about $8.3 million with $700,000 that's being paid out, I believe, either this week or started being paid out at the end of this week. And so the average award, the maximum is 10,000, but the average award for everyone that we've awarded anything to is about $9,300 thus far. And, and that Workforce Recovery Program that Career Source did, they've allocated, they've used about $909,000 of that for rehiring people in the various businesses that they've done. And so, so that's where they are in that. In terms of financial assistance, and here's a different chart, and you can see that here in small businesses, what's interesting is different from what's happened with our individual assistance for rent and for utilities. Here, almost three-quarters of the dollars that I've spent have actually gone to businesses in municipalities. And so how much do we think we could spend? We believe we could spend up to, based on the rate of how we're approving those applications and how they are continuing to come in. You remember, initially, we were thinking it would be a 10-day program, then we came back and said, Commissioners, you can leave the program open, and we'll continue accepting it, so we've never closed it. And we're still continuing to get additional applications, probably in the area of close to 40 a week, that staff is looking at trying to vet, et cetera, and approve as many as we can. We believe that the current rate that we're going, if we keep the program in place through December, if the Board so chooses, you could put another million, 1.5 million into it, and we could probably hand out about 11.5 million total, or at least that's what we would shoot for if the Board so chooses. But I'll give you more information on that in another kind of slide in another minute. Community Feeding, and we're rather proud of this in terms of what we've done, how, in terms of how many million pounds of food that we've, 2.49 million. How many meals have been distributed, over 2 million from various pop-up pantries that we have supported. The Children's Hunger Project has done about 46,000-plus meals that have been distributed. Farmer's Market, which is extraordinarily a successful program in various areas of the county, as you know, as Ian has shared information with you on, we've served over 17,000 households, and that's still going strong. We anticipate about 4.26 million is what we anticipate either having committed or spending through the end of the year. Who are some of our partners in this and what have they done? Second Harvest with a little over 11.28 million meals. The Brevard Public Schools and the Feeding Program, 1.34 million meals, and then Aging Matters with a little over 10,000 meals that have been distributed just during that one short period of time that you see there. What I also wanted to mention is that, you know, one of the first areas that when we got this funding, we came to you and talked about, is sharing with municipalities, so under which you were under no obligation to do that, but you did choose to do that. We discussed it with the Board, and we moved forward with that. And I'm happy to report that because of that, in the various programs you see there, from Family First and Quarantine, where we reimburse them for their costs related to those programs, it's a little over 1.5 million. Social Distancing, Teleworking, other compliance, a little over $1 million. For PPE, we either gave them the PPE or reimbursed them for about 922,000. We are purchasing decontamination machines for ourselves and other agencies, Charter Officers of about $665,000. Other public safety expenses, employee reassignment costs that qualify under the very specific guidelines that CARES funding provides and the Treasury's provided, so that we're almost at $5 million of obligations. That goes from a low of a couple of thousand dollars in some jurisdictions up to almost $1 million for the largest of the municipalities that have made requests. So we have probably 12 to 15 different municipalities that fall within that range of dollars spent. In terms of Sheriff Office obligations, and let me tell you what we did in that area, one thing that we did is we went to the Sheriff's Office and we requested that they give us certain information because we were very interested in assuring that from a public safety perspective, we tried to deal with things that were countywide. And so countywide from the Sheriff's Office, the most critical thing was Corrections, because that was a countywide service that cuts across municipalities and unincorporated area. So we asked the Sheriff's Office to give us information, and they were very accommodating in giving us that information, as it related to payroll costs and the areas that we already knew under the guidelines, which were for Corrections Officers, et cetera, that relate to the jail, or medical costs related to the jail, from the two periods of time of March 1st through September 30th, which was the one fiscal year, because that's reimbursable and CARES and the guidelines are very clear that that's reimbursable, and the Board could choose to do that, and then from October through December 30th. As a matter of fact, and so they've broken that down for us in a variety of areas, and we have that specific information, and I have that detailed to the degree any Commissioner would want to see it. Staff evaluated that into a variety of what we would call tiers, those that were very obviously, in our opinion, very clearly eligible on a countywide basis, and then other areas that are available as well, but, you know, would require significant additional funding. And, you know, of course, all of that is for the Board's consideration as we move forward. But as we bring all this together to show you where we are, once we've explained these pieces, then you'll be in a very good position, we hope, to decide what you need to do, and I'm sure the Sheriff and perhaps some of the other potential sub-receipients, you know, may have some info put for you during the public comment section of this meeting. So you'll see how we broke down the Sheriff's Office costs from what they gave us, and what you'll see is that in that quote-unquote first tier, and I'm here to tell you that the Sheriff's Office and the Sheriff has been a very good partner, you know, we wanted to be able to be walking hand-in-hand with them in what we brought forward, and it's my understanding, but I'll let him speak for himself, that he's very comfortable with what we are putting forth today relative to how we evaluated the tiers and what we're going to suggest in terms of opportunities for you to move forward. But you can see where those payroll costs fall in various areas, and then things that we are involved in either purchasing for the Sheriff or have, or would reimburse him for under supplies necessary due to COVID-19. So there's a variety of areas that are covered here, and we try to break that out in detail for you. Now, in certain areas, we are obviously still going to, while we believe these are the costs based on what he's told us, we don't have the backup documentation yet, but if the Board is good with these numbers, and we would move forward with reviewing that documentation through Tetra Tech and then reimbursing the Sheriff appropriately for these, and I'll talk to you how we could do that in a minute. Go ahead.
I just, I want to make sure that I'm on the same page. So is it what you're going to propose to set aside that amount to basically have Tetra Tech eval it, and then assuming that we have some or all of it qualified, then turn around and reimburse if that's the direction you get?
Right, yeah, and basically, we would, yeah, we are, in our minds, we're obligating, and if the Board's good with that, that's what we're going to have accomplished, we're going to obligate it, and then we'll be able to reimburse. We can talk to you about that, and the obligation is what we're concerned about doing, and this would be, some of this does deal with funding that is during fiscal year that has just passed, and so whether that's directly because there's certain legislation that's out there statutory about how, we're trying to work that out right now with the Sheriff's Office, as to how you accomplish that appropriately and still do it consistent with the CARES Act. A lot of it is going to be for funding in this fiscal year, and then you don't have that issue about it was part of last year's budget and is a cash forward, et cetera. And we can, you know, we believe this will all be okay for us to reimburse them, we just got to figure out the specifics of how we accomplish it administratively and do it without any problems.
So when, and I'm sorry to focus on this, but I know this has been a point of contention with some of my constituents, when you say reimburse them, and I really, I don't have a clear understanding in terms of what the end goal is with that, is it to add that money to the Sheriff's existing fiscal year budget? Or is it?
Yes, for dollars that are in this year's budget, the Treasury guidelines specifically say that any costs that you have that are related to Corrections Officers, medical-related costs, even deputy costs, personnel, including benefit costs, and for firefighters, on the firefighter side, it applies for all our EMS transport as well. Those are all reimbursable, meaning that you can add those dollars into the, those budgets to cover those costs. Now, yes.
I apologize, maybe I'm not being as articulate with my question as I ought to be, but I'm just trying to get a better understanding here in terms of the proposed logistics, even if you don't have the minutia figured out at this point. Is the idea, because where is a Board allocating funding to BCSO every year? Is it that what you're proposing is reimbursing ourselves because we've paid it? Or is it going to go to the Sheriff's Office? Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
What we would propose is that those dollars be set aside in a separate fund that the Sheriff would use for any kind of COVID-related expenses. Now, we can give him, a lot of these dollars here are where their personnel and medical costs, they can go, and we're going to suggest that if they relate it to the prior fiscal year, that he can use those resources for anything that would be, that he believes would be appropriately COVID-related.
Because I'm looking at the breakdown you have here, and some of it, it's not entirely clear if they're personnel costs, but if we've already budgeted funds for personnel costs, if we're reimbursing those funds, if they've already been paid once out of a different pool, I'm just trying to figure out what the other funds are going to be used for.
Yeah, and I'll have to let the Sheriff, you know, ask, tell you how he planned to do it from a staff perspective. We believe that they are all appropriately reimbursable, and therefore, if the Board, what the Board cannot do, and I think this is what the concern is, is you cannot take that money and give it to the Sheriff, and then he gives it back to you, because that's revenue replacement. But if you leave it in the Sheriff's budget and let him use it, especially if you direct that, these are restricted and we want you to use it for capital expenditures, et cetera. For example, he may want to build a new building at the jail that is going to socially distance more, or for one of his precincts or something of that nature. We believe all of that would be appropriate, and you can do that, and you can do that by utilizing the personnel and benefit cost dollars that are part of this $8 million that you see here. I'm going to also talk to you about additional expenses that are also reimbursable, that we're going to suggest if the Board, at the end, when we get done, if there's a pool of money left, you may want to put into public safety account where you can make the decisions of how that money can be spent moving forward. And that would be a combination of funds that could go to fire rescue and/or the Sheriff and/or other public safety needs, or anything that's COVID-related needs. Those will be dollars from other programs that have to be supported by personnel or benefit costs in this fiscal year, and I will talk to you more about that in a couple of slides.
And I, well, I hope this is the last question on it, I apologize, I just, you know, there are a few items that I have more concern about than others, but with respect to the last item that you mentioned, putting something aside or some amount aside in a public safety fund or deposit account, whatever it may be, are we, are we talking about based upon reimbursable expenses prior to 1230, but we don't have to spend it until some future date? Because I'm just trying to understand when we have to have the money committed by, if simply putting it in that fund is considered committing it, or if we actually have to have something contracted for by 1230?
If it's dollars that relate to personnel or benefit costs, and those are dollars that are expended by either the Fire Department or the Sheriff's Office for personnel or benefit costs during that period of October 1 to December 30th, and you give, and you have those dollars, and those dollars, they're considered expended, however amount of money that is, and obviously with the Sheriff as large an organization he is, and firefighters, we have 500-plus, you know, in that organization during that three-month period, those personnel costs and benefit costs, all of which are reimbursable, are eligible, you could fund any portion of that you want. You could, at that point, take those dollars and put it in a fund, leaving it for either fire rescue or fire rescue or the sheriff or, like I said, a public safety fund. And you can use it and you already presumed to have used that in the, because it's reimbursed for those dollars in their budget. So if you put it in those budgets.
So it's already committed then at that point?
Right, and you're already done. And so you could be using that in the future after January 1 for whatever capital or whatever purposes. And I would suggest that it's, you know, we should try to do COVID-related, obviously. And we're going to have those continuing needs moving forward. That could be for air conditioning, fixing of buildings, et cetera, a variety of different areas. And so there'd be significant discretion.
I appreciate that.
It's just, we don't want it coming back, it can't come back to the board because that would be revenue replacement.
Thanks, Frank.
Okay. And I'm sorry it took so long to explain.
No, no, I apologize.
Not easy.
I'm on board now. I appreciate it.
Let me jump then to school board obligations. And you can see what we have there in terms of what the schools have submitted. Once again, they haven't submitted all the detailed documentation that would be required. And we could require that and that's what we intend to require. But understand that if the boards are chosen, you were good with this number, you don't actually have to have them, and you said good, they don't have to do it. We can make this rather easy, whatever amount the board was comfortable with providing to the school board, because as long as it's below that 34.9 million, they're not required on that administrative convenience to, to provide that documentation if the board doesn't want to require it. They've agreed to and we have asked for it up to now, whatever amount the board chooses to, of that 7.5 million to encumber and give to them and ask them to give us the documentation for that. So unless the board wants to do differently than that, at least this is something for you to consider, how you want us to handle it. And so now let me go to the other areas, which is where is the funding going? And basically, based on what, you know, how I've described what we've obligated and what's quote unquote unobligated, we believe that, at least from where we were, and that's subject to change, but obviously, once you hear the public input and give us some direction, Jill will be ready to change those numbers. We believe there's about 51.1 million that's currently quote unquote unobligated, meaning that it may be in some of the programs, but we haven't committed to anyone even indirectly or temporarily based on what Tetra Tech has said, et cetera, that these funds are going to be available now. That, and so we'll start with that 51.1 million dollar number. What I'm going to give you in the next couple of slides is showing you that for additional economic support, we had requests or potential requests up to 44.5 million. And in public safety support, we have either eligible expenses and/or potential requests for 64.4 million. So obviously, you have the ability to allocate significant dollars in a variety of different ways. And so what have we quote unquote obligated? And what could you do? And what we did on the next slide here, commissioners, is we listened to what the board has said thus far and we've reached out to various agencies that the board has indicated an interest in wanting us to get information from, either the board as a whole or individual commissioners who said, you know, I want, I'd like to see this or at least get that information. And so that's what we've done here. And so what, what you have here, based on everything we've received, is at this point, we've obligated 8.4 million to the individual assistance and food programs that I've described that Ian and his group are operating. We have a potential of another 2.2 million. That is something that the board discussed, discussed briefly. Commissioner Loeb brought it up at a, the prior meeting. And Ian believes that he has the ability to fund up to that between the individual assistance and the food programs to do up to that between now and the end of December. So we've done that as potential additional dollars. The small business report, like I've indicated, we've paid 8.3 million. Another 700,000 is going to be paid this week. We believe on the current rate that we can go above the 10 million if the board wants to do it under the same program, keep it going until the end of December. And we believe we can spend up to 1.5 million more. So if you wanted, you could authorize that additional funding and go to 11.5 million. I mentioned to you already, the 7.5 million, which I think is where, you know, is a starting point for you to look, do you want to even do that much less or do you want to go more? If you want more without funding, you could go up to 34 million. That's the board's, you have that discretion, 34.9 million. In the next area, we've been partners with the hospitals, Parish Medical Center and Health First. Now Parish Medical Center, what you see obligated there is 1.3 million. I believe he's actually, may have already paid that, I'm not sure, but I know the documentation came in. It's already been vetted and I believe it's either been submitted or paid to Parish Medical Center. And that relates to reimbursement for COVID testing, et cetera, and things that they've done in the community. Now, the number that you see there for Health First was only 44,000. I will tell you that Health First yesterday provided Jill, I believe was approximately 1.1.
1.1 million.
1.1 million of testing-related expenses. We have not vetted that yet or got the documentation from that. That was just something we see from them yesterday. But in both cases, what we've done is, you know, you'll recall several months ago, the board discussed potentially providing funding to hospitals. So what we did is potential funding, because the number that was thrown out then was $5 million for each hospital system. And so I've just put that there. You could go up or lower than that. But we're, you know, we just put that as potential additional funding option, something that I think the board is interested in, would be interested in discussing. And then what you see is community support. So for the economic support programs, everything that we've heard the board talk about, we've, we've included there. So for animal rescue groups, we have $200,000. That's because, remember, Humane Society was able to get a $10,000 grant. So that's why we have 190,000 because they already had 10,000 that they've received. But you could go up to 200,000. And when I say go up, you could do any amount the board wanted, obviously, but that's the number that, that, you know, at least the board has discussed and we believe could be reimbursable. Brevard Zoo has submitted and that, that issue was brought to us. So we met with the zoo. They gave us a variety of numbers. Their initial number, you know, we weren't sure what it would be, so we sent it to Tetra Tech. And they've given us, they haven't done a final analysis yet, but based on the revenue streams and everything that they've looked at, they believe there's up to potentially 1.3 million. And so you could be anywhere from zero up to that amount. And we believe that's a potential amount that you might want to fund. Mental health, circles of care. Ian has discussed that. We went to circles of care. We have that broken down in a variety of different areas that we could go over and Ian, I think, is available to go over that in terms of community action, CAT program, forensic, multiply disciplinary teams, a Brevard partnership, telemedicine for circles of care, some hazard pay issues. And if they got everything that they've believed that they might be qualified for, once again, that hasn't been totally vetted yet, but you could allocate in the area of a little over a million dollars. And, and that would be available for potential funding. You know, we did have the issue with urgent care and so we put that for $5,000 per urgent care. We have not reached out to them yet. We haven't done any vetting, but that would be 130,000. Aging matters, we went and Ian can speak more to these issues. I believe it was about $34,000, what they thought was potentially reimbursable. They, you know, we were willing to go to higher numbers, but they've indicated to us that, you know, the sheriff's office has been very helpful to them with refrigeration and other related needs. And so, and then they've got a lot of reimbursements from different agencies. And of course, one of the things that, you know, we are very sensitive to is saying, hey, you know, we can't pay you a second time for something you've already been reimbursed for. And so that's the number that we got from them. The Homeless Coalition in Eden can give you additional information on that. I don't know if we received any additional and you may hear from some people today, but what we got from them was about 24,662 specifically of requested for reimbursements that, that are, that are, the potential for the board to grant. And then tourism and marketing, that comes from the TDC. It was put in by Peter Cranus because the TDC asked for it and I had to ask him if that's where it came from. He said, yes. That is something that is potentially eligible if the board chose to do that. And so those are potential economic support funding options that, once you hear in the board, you know, how do you want to distribute? Do you want to distribute that 51 million? And you can do it within those confines if you so choose, or you might do it a different On top of that, the other consideration for you is public safety funding options, as I mentioned. We have looked at it from, you know, we're trying to be good partners with the municipalities. And so we reached out to them and told them, hey, if you need reimbursement for any public safety staff, whether it's fire or police, that either had COVID or was quarantined or you had overtime because of people being quarantined and it cost you overtime or because they had COVID, we would reimburse. And all those dollars are in the dollars I've already spoken to you that have been committed in terms of what they've either had or they anticipate. And so what we looked at then was the countywide. And from the countywide perspective, remember, I think it was at the, I know it was at the last board meeting, I was asked, what was the potential for reimbursement for fire rescue? And that amount for the period that's involved for our EMS transport, for our medics and EMT staff that drive ambulances or on ambulance crews for that period of time, could be 11.1 million. The board could decide to reimburse that cost and it would be qualified under CARES. And we would put that money in fire rescue's budget and it would not come back to the general fund. It would stay in fires rescue budget for fire rescue related purchases related to things that we can do in different areas. Fire EMS dispatch is also a EMS dispatch and medic support for the rest of the organization is also a qualifiable expense if the board chose to do that. I was asked about that. That would be an additional 15 million. And then in addition to the 8 million that the sheriff, 8.8 million that I've discussed earlier, if you looked at all their correction costs for that whole period between March and December and things that would qualify, you could do 37 million, which, you know, they did not make that as a request. They just provided us that information. And so I'm showing it to you, just like I did for the schools, that that was, you know, you could go to 34 million. Well, you could go to 37 million for the sheriffs based on what we know are reimbursable costs. And that would be a potential of 64 million. Now, I believe, and I'm, once again, I hope if the sheriff chooses to speak on this issue, he can address it. I think he was very comfortable saying, hey, in this second tier of money, i.e. any pot of money that we do for public safety, that's, you know, outside of his first 8.8 million, we could put the money from the fire EMS, fire medic dispatch dollars and anything from jails correction, 15 million or 37 million, put those dollars together in a public safety fund that we can then determine at a future date, because they are current year expenses, that we could put that in a pot that we would then spend it as the board, the sheriff, fire rescue thought was appropriate moving forward. And so with that, what I want to review is once again, that what we're going to be looking for is board direction on this distribution of the funds, what we've been doing, you know, and we're looking for your input in those areas and what you want to see us do between now and the end of the year. You know, what's important for me to also say is this, is that when CARES funding was initially given to us, we were told you have to have the money out of the bank by December 30th. That changed. It changed rather significantly to this point now, which is whatever you choose to do with the CARES funding, whether it's for service or for goods, you have to have a contract in place that says you are going to get the services or the goods delivered by December 30th. And you can pay, you know, as long as you encumber those funds for that service under that contract during that time period, you're going to be covered and okay. What they've accommodated and said, if for some reason, not due to you, you had a contract like that in place and they don't get it to you until early January because of problems with, you know, delivery of goods because they're, you know, low on stock or something, as long as they were committed to do it and it's not you, the local government's fault for getting it, then that expense would still be covered by CARES. What we can't do is enter into a contract that says it's okay if we receive these goods or these services in January. That's not eligible for CARES funding. As it stands now, unless Congress changes it or Treasury stand, that's how it applies. And that's why it was important to have this workshop now to give you the opportunity to decide, how do we move forward? Because you're not going to have a lot of time to change things after today in terms of how we move forward with the allocation of these dollars and these funds. So that's a lot of information. I'm available. Shannon knows a lot about what's going on. Jill knows a lot about what's going on. Ian knows a lot about what's going on. So does Kathy Wall. We're all here and ready to answer any questions any of you may have.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, so here's what we're going to do at this point. I'm not going to accept any motions until we have public comment heard. I spoke with Ms. Bentley and she suggested that that's the most appropriate way to handle this. I know that I and at least one other commissioner during the beginning of this meeting circulated some potential proposals. What I would suggest after we have public comment, if you all haven't had a chance to circulate anything that you may propose, if you think it's complicated enough that it needs to be distributed in writing, just make sure that the clerk has a copy so that we can include it in the minutes. We'll go ahead. Sheriff Ivy, I don't know if you care to speak, but we can hear from you now, otherwise I can.
Sir, just I think our county manager did a great job of laying everything out and total agreement with everything he said. We certainly have always tried to be good partners. And I think he and his staff have done a really good job at putting the presentation together and making sure everything's been noted so that you guys can make your decisions.
I appreciate it, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's pretty succinct.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so we'll start up in that case with Edwin Lofton. And again, if the commission wants to do differently, certainly we can do that. But my thought is for the, the folks that are specifically mentioned, where their agencies or organizations are specifically mentioned in Frank's presentation, we'll give them five and then everyone else three. Is that acceptable or would anyone prefer to do it differently? Okay, that's how we'll do it. So Mr. Lofton, I'll go ahead and give you. Any, any concern, Ms. Bentley?
You just have a board policy. You should probably make a motion. How much?
Make a motion to do that. And I guess with any organization that has more than one speaker, we'll give them the option of either having each of their speakers have three or give them just five to one speaker. Is that fair? Okay, motion, Commissioner Darnity? Commissioner Pritchett? I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, to be clear, that's a cumulative total of five, right? We're not going to give everyone three minutes if there's 10 people, correct?
Well, I think we have to give every individual speaker three minutes. That's my understanding, correct, Ms. Bentley?
Yes, yes.
So my thought is if there's an organization, if they have 12 people or multiple people, they can either take three minutes apiece or five for any, any individual speaker they wish. But it's not that each individual gets five from each.
Yeah, if there's 10 speakers, do we really need to give one five minute? I mean.
On the same item or?
I only get to speak one.
It doesn't matter.
So like the SPCA, excuse me, the Humane Society, for instance, I saw has at least two cards. If they wanted, without, without any motion, we would have had three minutes apiece regardless. With the motion, they can either have three minutes apiece, which they'd otherwise be entitled to, or if they'd prefer to have one speaker speak for five minutes and then not have the other speaker where speakers speak, then they can opt to do that if they prefer. All right, so it sounds like it passed in any event. I don't know, Commissioner.
Or we could just point out that if you have 12, that if one person says pretty much succinctly what the other 11 are thinking, if the other 12 just say, I agree with what's already been said, rather than just repeat themselves 12 times. I don't know if that's going to be the case, but.
I would certainly encourage it. So it sounds like that carried. Commissioner Tobias, should we put you in the affirmative or the negative? Affirmative, okay. Passes unanimously in that case. All right, so we'll start up with Edwin Lofton with Parish. I'll go ahead and get you on the timer here. And I did manage, Commissioner Pritchett, to get this thing working while we were going through some of the presentations, so you're off the hook on the stopwatch. Mr. Lofton, you've got the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, commissioners, for this opportunity. Again, my name is Edwin Lofton. I am the Senior Vice President of Acute Care and the Chief Nursing Officer at Parish Medical Center. And I want to spend a couple of minutes with you, telling you why we are asking for an additional $5 million in CARES funding based on the who, what, and why. additional $5 million in CARES funding, based on the who, what, and why. Who is Parrish Medical Center, and why is it relevant here? One, our mission, vision, and values are, our mission is healing experiences for everyone all the time. We serve North Brevard community and have that obligation. We are a public hospital. We are an independent hospital. And we are, like you, we are a subsection of the government of the state of Florida. We have enabling legislation that was written in 1958 that gives our Board of Directors complete governing authority for our district. And in our enabling legislation, as you see on the slide, the Board of Governors is directed, is authorized, and empowered to provide healthcare benefits to those members of the public, both within our district and outside of our district. Our enabling legislation also states that the members of our governing body are not reimbursed for the time that they spend. I'll come back to the enabling legislation in just a few minutes. But we believe, as a partner with the county government of Brevard, Parrish Medical Center has an obligation to meet the needs of our community. So what are our plans? We're looking at broad changes in creating an even safer environment. We have a very safe environment right now. We, like I'm sure every other hospital in Brevard County in the state of Florida, have made changes through COVID, but we have plans to enhance those changes and further improve the safety of the environment. We are looking at infection prevention innovations across the entire organization and across our entire entity. We're looking at making changes in our emergency department to create, again, a safer environment, and to create a standalone respiratory care area that we can actually provide what's called universal care, meaning we can provide care in the same bed, at a med-surg level care, all the way up to an ICU level care, without the person having to move. We will bring the equipment, the nursing staff, the physicians to them, and not have the burden on the patient. Housewide, we're looking at enhanced automations. Again, the touch, remove the touch from doors, from light switches, from HVAC systems. Robotic technology, again, from a cleaning and infection prevention, and significant changes and improvements in our HVAC or air systems, so that we can control the flow of air at any location at any given time. If we need to provide a negative pressure environment, we can do that. If tomorrow we need to provide a positive pressure environment, we can do that as well. Again, why? We are the Public Health Safety Network. We have a legal, because of our enabling legislation, and moral obligation to the community we serve, which is North Brevard, and to assist with any, anyone else in Brevard County. And it is fulfilling our not-for-profit public health mission. In our enabling legislation, Sections 5 and Section 9 are truly where this comes from. I have a copy of that. Would be glad to share that with anybody that would like to see that. And in summary, what we're looking at is, I've got 5.9 here, but again, we're asking for $5 million in CARES funding so that we can make substantial improvements in the emergency department, in the universal respiratory care area, and infection prevention innovations. In addition, we are, we commit ourselves to providing back 20% back to our community. We have identified Blanton Park as an area that needs community resources, and are committed to that 20% to go back. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lofton. Any questions for him?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Lofton. You mentioned Brevard, you serve North Brevard. What percentage, and this money would be CARES money that came to Brevard County, what percentage of the impatients or patients you serve are Brevard County residents?
Off the top of my head.
I'd rather appreciate a number than off the top of your head, sir.
But I would say it's 85, 90% strong is Brevard County residents.
Okay. Let me follow that. Have you received any PPP dollars?
Yes, we have.
Can you, off the top of your head, give me an idea of the amount of PPP dollars you've received?
I'd rather bring that back to you. I do not have the dollar figure on the top of my head right now.
I think it's very important, when we determine how, $5 million, how much you've already received from the federal government. I certainly would expect that before I made a, any type of appropriation. As an independent taxing authority, do you recognize your authority to, or your board's authority to raise taxes?
We do recognize that, and the board.
Thank you. On September the 15th of 2020, less than six weeks ago, during the COVID crisis that, as you say, was causing great amounts of financial stress on your organization, what was, to the best of your knowledge, the vote of your board as to get those resources from your constituents that you serve?
I'm not following your question.
You had the ability to raise a tax in order to fill a hole.
Hmm.
You recognized the authority to do that.
Yes.
What was the vote by the board as to whether or not to collect those resources?
It was not to tax at this point in time.
Unanimously not to tax?
Hmm.
Okay. So you had the authority to tax, and yet you decided not to, and said then, come to us to ask us, Brevard County, for those resources, I assume. Why, why should Brevard County as a whole cover the tax, cover the north part of the county specifically? Why should, why should my constituents in South Brevard be responsible for filling a hole in North Brevard when the constituents there have the ability to do just that?
Are you asking them essentially what makes Parrish unique?
No, I'm just asking, this is CARES dollars that was allocated to all of Brevard County. He serves 85% Brevard County, off the top of his head. That would be centralized in North Brevard County. Why should dollars that have been allocated to Brevard County in total be specifically spent for just North Brevard?
If I may, I need to clarify something. I may have answered a question incorrectly. You asked me how many of our patients were Brevard County patients. I said 85% of our patients are Brevard County. We do not serve 85% of Brevard County.
No, I understood, I'm sorry. You said 80, cumulative 85% were.
Of the patients that we serve.
And overwhelmingly, would those come from North Brevard?
Actually, about, a large majority do come from North Brevard. We get about 18% of our EMS traffic from mid-county and south county.
Okay, so it's 80, whatever, 80%, 82%, right, are served from North Brevard. Your mission, again, this is, this is tax dollar, this is dollars that are meant to benefit Brevard County in total. Why should, my question is, why should we do that for a small percentage of, whatever your number, 82%?
If the other organizations are asking for money, that's their business. I am only representing Parrish Medical Center, and we're asking for CARES funds to help support the new environment of health related to the COVID pandemic.
Okay, and sorry, I'm going to go back to the previous question, and I'm sorry. Why is it, why did the board, do you, do you know why the board did not make the decision to assess their right of taxation in order to fill that need that you're discussing right now, just six weeks ago, when COVID was just as prevalent as it is today?
Yeah, I cannot speak for the nine members of our board.
Okay.
Six of which you all support and nominate. We do not see the taxing issue and the CARES funding in the same bucket.
Thank you.
Please.
Mr. Lofton, has Parrish?
Is your line on?
Has Parrish Medical Board ever taxed?
They have not taxed in 26 years.
So typically, I, just to follow up the hospital, they're pretty good at managing funds and trying to cover all their funds. So I'm guessing when they voted no, they're still trying very hard to live within the constraints of the revenues they have coming in?
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's what I thought also. Thank you, sir. And on that, I, I'm hoping all the hospitals around the whole community turns in for some CARES funds, because I think the medical industry has been hit hard, and you guys didn't have a choice to not serve the community. And I'm thankful for that, except if we had sick people and you weren't serving them, that would not be a good scenario. So thank you, sir, for all of you, all of y'all, everything y'all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lofton, couple of questions for you. First, Parrish is the only public health system, or I should say, public hospital system in Brevard County, is it not?
Correct.
And as we've heard earlier, we've provided at least a seven-digit number directly to the individual cities. So I think there's already a precedent that we work with our governmental partners. One of the items I'm going to be bringing up after we have public comment is a potential set aside for Port Canaveral, which is also a taxing authority, which has not sought to tax residents, which may have some degree of overlap with the geographic boundaries of your taxing authority, but it certainly, by and large, covers a different clientele, a different area of constituents. I don't personally see anything wrong if we can help a governmental partner avoid taxing its constituents, even if it disproportionately may benefit one or two different commission districts, whether or not my district's included with that, given that the alternative is that we can return this money to the feds, where no one gets the benefit locally here. In terms of the, the 20% match that Parrish had referenced, that is, to your understanding, going to be, assuming you get a $5 million allocation for the sake of the conversation here, that's going to go into Blanton Park. To your understanding, is that a relatively impoverished area with a soup kitchen in it?
Yes, it is.
And that's a county park as well, to your understanding?
Yes, it is.
So, you know, certainly, I don't want to micromanage, assuming this goes in that direction, how that money is spent. I certainly would be happy to defer to Commissioner Pritchett, since it isn't solidly in her district. But with respect to other things that may differentiate Parrish from some of the other health systems here, if you know, the, is it the CEO, what is the head of Parrish? The president, CEO?
President and CEO, George McCarren.
Is he driving around in a AMG G-Wagon, or in a $100,000 car?
No, he is not.
Does he have a private helicopter?
No.
Does he drive a Buick?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next up, we'll have.
I have a question.
Please.
Ms. Bentley, I know we talked about whether or not, you know, requiring the matching for the CARES funding was legal or not. And while you stated, at least it was your legal opinion, that it may be legal, because it's publicly, it's to public benefit, the 20%, my concern is, is if this was a county obligation, is this revenue replacement?
It could be considered revenue replacement if the funding isn't coming from a different source than the CARES money. If they're taking the CARES money and putting it into a park, that is a problem. If, if it's basically a pass-through. But if the funding is coming from somewhere else, that's a different story.
But then would, would then, would Parrish require an obligation to show the $5 million in total use for CARES expenses at that point, and then a million dollars from their?
Right. The agreement that has been drafted for the hospital and sent to them already has audit provisions and a clawback provision.
Right.
You could also add a clause that indicates that any expenditures regarding the 20% would not use CARES money. You'd specify that affirmatively.
Right, because I, you know, I have to be careful, obviously, because we've already determined that, I can't, so I can't even speak in very general terms, I've been told. So I'm trying to speak specifically just to Parrish. So while I, while I think that this Parrish idea is a great idea, I do not agree with the 20% obligation, because I think that even if legal, it looks like a quid pro quo. It looks like, hey, you fix our park, you guarantee you'll give us 20% of money back, you know, I don't like it. I don't like how it feels, and I don't like how it looks. I'm, I'm more than happy to, to help them get their facility up to date on everything. I think that any way we can help a healthcare system do that is wonderful, but I just, I don't feel comfortable with the 20% obligation. So I would be very supportive of this if it didn't have that in there.
And here's what I'll say with respect to that. You know, as far as it's striking someone as a quid pro quo, every time you contract to do anything, that's technically a quid pro quo. A quid pro quo sounds horrible, but all that means is that you're getting something in exchange for doing something.
But I think my concern is, given the exchange of things that have happened in the past with other agencies, I don't want that ever viewed by our public even as that. So even if the intention is pure, I still don't, I would prefer to, to vote in support of this without that in there. That would be my vote, at least, or my opinion, in the future, once we hear from everybody.
Yeah, it seems like we're almost wrestling away a benefit that the agency is, or I should say, the entity is willing to give the public without there being a reason. I can tell you, as far as the specific concerns that you brought up with respect to where the money is coming from for the 20% match, I'm happy to have Mr. Lofton come up again and confirm my understanding that it's not coming out of the $5 million that we're allocating.
Then they could do that after we, they're awarded those monies on their own. They don't need us to give them a legal document or terms to their COVID funding with that. They're more than willing and probably excited to do that, but I don't want that in our contract if this board approves it.
It should be totally separate.
It should be completely separate. I didn't like it when it went down with commission, I didn't like it when it went down with the commission, when it, with the waste management thing years ago, like, none of us were on this board for. I don't like this. So I mean, it's, again, I'm just giving you my opinion. I think it's great that they're willing to give back to their community. I think it says a lot about what a, what a fine organization they run. I'm just not comfortable with that being the terms of their agreement for their COVID funding.
I believe they would also do the project regardless. They, they have a lot of community outreach they do, and I think Commissioner Lowry, you gave them a very good idea with talking to them, so I know they're going to do that regardless. So either way we contract, it's fine.
And I'm happy to support it without that in there.
Yeah, Commissioner Pritchett, I'll, you know, you certainly have worked with them longer than I have. If you're comfortable, they'll go ahead and do that anyway.
They're, they're very honorable. They're a great hospital. They do a lot of community projects.
I don't have, I just want to put it out there, I don't have any reason to question that. I just have not had the longstanding relationship that you have with them, though every interaction I've had with them has been universally as positive as positive can be. So I don't have a bad feeling, but as far as trusting any entity, any entity whatsoever, to do something that they're not contractually obligated to do, that's a bit of a step, but I'll, you know, I'll go ahead, I'll trust you on this one with respect to that, and we'll, you know, we'll, when it comes time after public comment, have the motion phrased accordingly.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I've got a little consternation with a million dollars.
It's a big word, sir.
Yeah, I, I just don't understand the basic premise, right? They, they come here for $5 million, but they have a $1 million set aside for, to help a park. Why don't, why don't we just provide them with $4 million? That way, that, you know, they can keep the $1 million, make the decision whether to spend the money on the park or not, and then we don't have to worry about it contractually one way or another. Why don't?
So is your, your proposal to allocate $4 million instead?
No, my, my, I'm just saying it's ridiculous either way, to, 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 to provide this amount of money to an organization that magically has $1 million in another pot of money to go towards a park. I would want them to say, hey, we have, we need $5 million. If we don't get $5 million, we will literally be shutting our doors, and we will not be able to serve the people of North Brevard. That's not what we're hearing. What we're hearing is, hey, we think it's uncomfortable to tax the people. Yes, we haven't done it for 26 years, but they're not going to understand this, so what we're going to do is come to us, and by the way, we have an extra $1 million to, to go fund a park. It just does not ring as this organization needs these resources in such a way that this is going to be the one thing. And remember, this is a binary decision. This is, either goes to public safety, or goes to any one of these organizations. As Mr. Abate, Slide 28 shows, we have the ability to spend $75,260,782 for, for public safety right now. We only have 51,100,000, and I'm going to try to bump that up to 55,800,000. Even if that's successful, we cannot fully fund the, not obligation, but the amount we have to, for public safety. So please, as we make decisions, think about this, it goes to one or the other. And I don't, I'm not hearing out of Parrish that it's close the doors. I'm hearing that, hey, this would be nice to have some cool equipment, we'll build you a park, and thank you very much. It's going to come to.
Commissioner Lowry, if you'd like.
If we have any hospital right now that's not able to manage, and they're going to go out of business if we don't give them funds to help improve their facility, to help with our community, to keep COVID at bay or the other infections we have, then I would have great concerns in giving them funds regardless. I'm fine if you guys want to do the $4 million and you do the other. They, they keep money aside to always do community projects. This project that they're working for in this park is also having a boys' and girls' club. So it's what, it's what my community hospital does. They don't make profits. They spend the money in the community, helping to take the pressure off of the rest of the community and other problems that we have. So if you guys want to do the $4 million and do that, I'm fine with it as well. I heavily support getting money into the medical facilities, because they, you know, they, I'm sure they got reserves built up. If they don't, they're not doing their job. But they have been hit financially very hard, and they're not allowed to just shut down for a while, because they have, I think you guys lost an ability to, to fund even all fund even all of your staff for a while because you lost income. So you know what? It's just been tough on them. And I think this is a good place for us to put some of these funds into. They have been very responsible, and I don't have a dog in the fight, really. I just think it's the right thing to do.
Commissioner, I'll say, it seems pretty clear from what Commissioner Tobias had mentioned that he's not going to support it, whether it's four or five. If the rest of us are on board supporting it at five and they have $5 million in legitimate expenses, I would suggest we keep it at that because it's not going to change the end vote. It's just going to hurt your constituents. Or, phrased differently, it's not going to help them as much as it otherwise could. As far as Commissioner Tobias' contention that we ought to consider whether or not they're going to shut their doors, I don't think hardly any of these allocations that we've made or any of them that we're considering are dealing with organizations, governmental, taxing authority, or otherwise, that are going to shut their doors. BCSO isn't going to shut its doors. BCFR isn't going to shut its doors. The urgent care clinics aren't going to shut their doors. The Humane Society isn't going to shut their doors. If we don't give them an allocation, then we would allocate nothing if that's the standard that we have to impose. So to say, well, it's an either/or and there's an opportunity cost in the sense that if we fund this, it's money coming out of public safety, okay, well, let's apply your additional standard, your additional condition precedent to funding. Are they going to shut their doors if we don't give them the money? The answer is no.
We have, Mr. Chair, we have a authority and a responsibility to the agencies that we directly oversee, the ones that we collect tax dollars for. These organizations are unique in such a way that they have the authority to tax themselves. They just neglected to do that. And instead, they've come to this board to ask for these dollars. Make no mistake, if this goes into public safety funding, I didn't want to have to say this with a microphone in front of my--
Sure.
But I will nonetheless. This will go towards a public good with federal tax dollars. At such a time, we are going to have to fill that public good. The question is, do we fill that public good with federal tax dollars right now, or do we fill that with public dollars down the road? This isn't going to help my tenure on the county commission. I'll be off in four years. The costs won't be realized down the road. But that new fire truck that needs to be purchased, we have a decision to make. Do we purchase that new fire truck with this, with these CARES dollars through the public safety funding, or do we do that in, with additional fees or taxes four or eight years from now? And I think that as this organization has the ability to assess tax, let them take care of themselves that way, and we'll take care of the organizations that we have a fiduciary relation, fiduciary relationship with.
I think you're overstating the opportunity cost. And I'll kind of call on Shannon, if she wants to punt, I'll let her punt, certainly. Is our choice with this to choose to fund a fire truck or to do this? I mean, is it an either/or? That's not how I'm seeing it.
Well, I'm probably going to punt to the county manager--
Okay.
--in terms of how he intends to fund things for the future. So that's not an easy question to answer.
Mr. Abate?
I'll go back to what I said at the very beginning when I, remember, I said, this board as the body has very significant discretion in how you think these funds ought to be allocated. And as long as what you do is reasonable, you can make the decision of what you think the best allocation would be. And that's really why we're here today, is to hear what you want us to do on that.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir.
I agree with Commissioner Tobias, with what he's saying. But I don't agree that we should take money that is available to us to use in a public, direct public manner to benefit an entity that is in the business of taking care of our own. That's what a hospital does. And they're going to spend the money. If we don't give them $5 million, they're still going to spend the money because that's what they do. They're in the business of helping the community. We have an opportunity to help them. So my only question is, and I'll defer to Commissioner Rizardi, if you're in favor of giving them the $5 million and then they'll take whatever they're going to give to the park, or would you rather do it at $4 million and let them do the million off the side? That's--
I mean, I would have to know exactly, again, that would be whether or not they had those amount of expenses, like $5 million worth, or whether they would invest $5 million into improving their technology and their rooms and better, because this isn't the first pandemic we're going to hit. I mean, we know that. This is just our first round, our first, I guess, testing of the community. So for me, it wasn't the amount, it was the obligation to have to do anything.
Well, it doesn't feel right to me.
No.
And some people would say--
And it's legal, yes, I get it. And it's nice and it feels good and stuff, but that's not, I don't want there to be any sort of, I don't want there to be any sort of appearance that you have to do this in order to get that. That's not our job to make sure that they invest their, you know, community service dollars anywhere. So I wasn't comfortable with that right from the beginning. I wasn't comfortable when those conversations were happening before, and I don't want them to be a part of anybody's terms for COVID funding.
So what do you want to do?
Mr. Lofton, I don't know if you can address Commissioner Rizardi's--
Do you want to do the $5 million or do you want to do the $4 million?
I would say I would probably have to know what their needs are. I mean, I imagine that their losses are a lot more than $5 million.
Well, I think the point is that they're going to invest the $1 million in the park. So the point--
But does the $4 or the $5 million matter at this point? If they're still, they have $1 million to invest, they're still going to invest it if it's $4 million, they're going to invest it if it's $5?
Here's the thing, though--
Losses are $10 million, and the $5 million is going to be helpful to them.
They've also committed, it's not just the million for five, it's not that you take the million off and now nothing goes to the park. It was a 20% match of whatever they're allocated. So if your goal is to eliminate that, then give them nothing.
I'm fine with the $5 million. If their losses, I mean, could you speak to the hospital's losses?
I do not have the dollar figure in front of me, but they have been significant, just as every other hospital in Brevard County.
Yeah, I spoke to them before.
And I would just, you know, Commissioner Tobias brings up a good point. If you, and I'm not saying, oh, you need to tax everybody, but if you're a taxing authority and you're obligated to collect funding that way and you're able to do charitable work, I would at least talk to your board about that consideration.
The board is spending this year considering that. It is not a matter of turning a switch on or switch off. Our enabling legislation provides very specific guidance of if we choose to tax. It is a very finite millage rate, year one, and the actual dollars, we're actually, our finance team right now is going through and determining what the initial dollars would be based in the millage, and it's pennies in the bucket.
But your board is considering--
They are having a conversation, yes.
And I, I mean, the worst thing to me, and thankfully it doesn't sound like we're going to go there, Mr. Lofton, would be to say no totally to this, have you all taxed, and then to send the $5 million up to DC. That would be the dumbest thing we can possibly do. And I know we would, the bulk of us, I would think, would certainly be opposed to that course of action. So I'm hoping that doesn't occur. But, you know, seeing that you all haven't taxed, I don't view that as a bad thing. I think that's a good thing and that you've been able to avoid doing that. And if you've done that, even in part hedging a bet that you may get some meaningful allocation here, then God bless you. You know, hopefully that rings true and that ends up working out for you in the end. I would rather do what we can using federal funds to avoid having any of our constituents taxed, whether it's in D2, D1, or another district, or some combination of the districts. I just, I think if we can use this money to avoid having our citizens taxed, that's a very excellent use of the funds.
And I think it's farther than that. I think the outreach, the outreach of the impacts are a lot larger than just, you know, an upgrading to a room and telemedicine. It has a lot more to do with the employees that also work at the agency because if they're paying, you know, you're going through one pot of money to upgrade the system or to upgrade the rooms and make them negative pressure rooms, and you're turning around and you're, maybe somebody's getting a higher patient load, maybe somebody's not getting the hours, or maybe they're getting called off because you're not doing the elective surgeries. The impacts are much bigger than what people see.
Thank you for recognizing that. And the dollars I have for you on the screen here are estimates that have been put forth with a engineering, architectural firm that we are already going through. To Commissioner Smith's point, this is what we're going to do. We have this obligation to the community. And to your point, our equal obligation is to our care partners, is to provide a safe environment for them to work. We are very proud, knock on wood, of the fact that we have not had any care partner acquire COVID in the working environment. Now, they have acquired it in the community and outside, but we have not had one single diagnosis based on exposure at work, and we hold that honor very strong.
That's great.
Thank you.
Mr. Sherwood, final thing.
Yes, sir.
And I know I'm beating a dead horse, but I do want to, I do want to amend--
Briefly.
Yes, I'll leave real quick. You're not sure of your losses?
I don't have the exact number for me.
Any idea, ballpark?
Millions. It's in the, I wasn't prepared to give that to you today.
Okay. And you don't know how much federal dollars in PPP?
I do not have the exact--
Okay, thank you. So again, before we make a vote, we do not know how much or if they lost anything, and how much PPP dollars they've received from the federal government. But they do know they won $5 million for whatever respiratory care or something like that.
I don't think anyone's proposing just giving them $5 million. It has to be vetted by Tetra Tech and it has to qualify. If they don't submit $5 million in expenses to qualify, they don't get $5 million in reimbursement. They're only going to get up to what they qualify for with a cap, an absolute ceiling of five. So if they only qualify for a million, that's all they're going to get.
I get it, but we've appropriated those funds.
Appropriated them?
Obligated, I guess, is the term--
Oh, okay, okay. Set it aside, sure.
Obligated is the term. And we've also opened the door here to, if we open the door with Parrish, we open it to Health First, we open to Omni, we open to every mom and pop private practitioner out there. In fact, this board has said on many occasions that we want to get this in people's hands. And people's hands is not Parrish, it's not Health First, it's Dr. Joe Smith on the, who has a sole practitionership with two nurses and three admin clerks. That's--
So to get it back in people's hands, you'd rather that they just tax them, and then we can give them the money to pay the taxes? Does that somehow benefit the constituents in some way?
I'm saying if we open the door, no, I'm saying Parrish doesn't need the money. If they needed the money, they would have taxed. They don't need the money. They have $1 million laying around to build a park.
Commissioner, respectfully, I think we're kind of getting in a circular argument at this point. I'll leave it at that and let you have the last word.
Can I ask, Mr. Lofton--
Please.
How many employees does Parrish Medical Center employ?
Right now, we're just at 1,000 employees.
So you support 1,000 families in the community that work at the hospital. I can't imagine the amount of staff that's on it, Health First and other hospitals. Thank you, sir.
All right. So we'll go ahead. Next up, I just want to get through these public comment cards.
I'm going to break things. I gotta get a sweater.
Okay, do you want to, we can do a recess real quick now?
If you don't mind.
Yeah, all right. We'll go ahead and do a recess for five minutes. We'll call it back to order at a quarter till. Thank you all.
I am freezing.
No worries. Cards. Next up, we'll have the Brevard Humane Society. You see, we have Ronnie Flo and Maggie Cardinal. I don't know if you all want to make use of five minutes for one or three minutes apiece?
Five minutes for one.
Five minutes, you got it.
It was nice of her to speak for me. Hi, I'm Ronnie with the Brevard Humane Society. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to point out a couple highlights from the handout that I dropped off for everybody. The Humane Society has been in business for 68 years. And just recently, we started showing the increase in our losses. We are funded by our services, our fundraising contributions, excuse me, our total losses for March through September is $291,000. And we're having to now cut staff hours. We are down 4,000 hours for volunteer hours. But on the other side, we're still doing what we need to do, caring for the animals. We're still providing food through the food pantry, excuse me. And if you look at the handout again, 60% of the animals in our shelter are strays, which would normally be a burden on taxpayers. Excuse me, all of a sudden I can't breathe.
Would you like a water?
No, I'm okay. So, like I said, the 60% of the strays that come into our shelter, those are normally animals that would go to the county animal services, but we take them. And we want to take them. So with that combined with our losses, that is our request for funding from the CARES Act. We appreciate the $10,000 we already received, but as you can see, we could use a lot more.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Michael Bramson-- Next up, we have Michael Bramson from Altamont Springs with the Fire Union. And just to give folks the lineup for the remainder so they can get situated and ready. After Mike, we'll have Family Promise of Brevard in Rockledge. Not sure which individual speaker, but I'll have them identify themselves. Then we'll have Drew Warren from Palm Bay and Liz Alward from Satellite Beach. Mr. Bramson.
Good afternoon. Mike Bramson, President of the Brevard County Firefighters Union. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the CARES funding moving forward. I congratulate those elections and those things won in the past couple of days this week. I represent the Firefighters Union specifically, not necessarily the function and operations of the Fire Department. I thank County Manager Frank Abate for his addressing the operational needs, concerns and the line item of the Fire Department moving forward. As the firefighters, as the people in the field doing the job, the essential functions, we feel that the direction of CARES funds should look into what is the original intent first, which is public safety across the board. It has been changed multiple times, which we will benefit from, of course, as County Manager Frank Abate has pointed out. But public safety, number one, with the COVID event, it has not even waned. It has changed, it has been manipulated, it has moved forward one direction or another, but it has actually not, actually gone away. Brevard County offers and supplies transport services for the entire county, 17 cities and the entire unincorporated area. It does not have any other emergent service transport. If you call 911, we are obligated, regardless of funding sources, billing, insurance, we will show up, we will perform our job task, and it will happen. During the past couple of months, specifically since the summer and the start of school, we've had to meet this obligation through mandatory overtime, telling your firefighters, you are not going home, you will work yet another 24-hour shift to meet the compliance of staffing levels to perform this task. There is a cost to this. It is a diluted cost, and the County Manager can probably give you a lot better idea of the difference between mandatory overtime, assumed overtime, regular straight pay, FSLA and all the other things, or our finance chief is in the back of the room. The COVID created a new problem because we can only capture trending. You want to talk about absolute numbers, you want to talk about all these other things that a lot of these facilities are bringing up. This PowerPoint's still up here. I cannot bring those numbers to you because all I can tell you is trending. During the COVID event, I can tell you that our trauma, the amount of car accidents, life safety issues we've done, has stayed the same. You may say, oh, well, COVID, people aren't leaving the house, everything's going down. We run the same amount of people in car accidents. The amount of people who are having cardiac arrest at their home, in the field, before they get to a facility is significantly higher with everything else accepted. Trending year to year, moving forward, we call more people, do more work for cardiac events in the field, in the ambulance right now than we ever did before. That's strictly from COVID. And our overall medical has decreased, but you can't continue to accept that because of the trending data from the COVID. And I see my clock has run out at three minutes.
If you want to finish your thought, I'm happy to let you do that.
The last part of my conversation, to fill in the last part of that time, is we're talking about reimbursement, we're talking about what can be, what could be moved forward, the COVID event. I'm here to tell you that the money is already spent. We've already had to do the job from COVID, and I call March 17th till today. That money is gone, it's spent. It is truly a reimbursement for the fire rescue so that the survivability of fire rescue moving forward, compounded by the ongoing flu and whatever else may come up, we need a contingency. And I think that the fire rescue, public safety across the board, Sheriff's Department, Corrections Dispatch, public safety as an entity is in dire straits, and it is directly related to our response to COVID. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have Family Promise of Brevard. Not sure who's speaking on their behalf.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
My name is Mark Sexton. I'm the Director of Programs with Family Promise of Brevard, speaking on behalf of Tara Pagliari. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it because she had another conflict. Family Promise was the original shelter able to take in a family that included a dad. We were the first shelter that opened our doors in 2013 that could keep a family together, and we continue to take that on as our mission. When COVID came forward, we had to make some pretty significant shifts. We closed down our shelter on March 22nd, and we made sure that that family got into housing. Since then, we immediately pivoted towards working towards prevention services. And in doing so, we were able to establish a program that moved over $100,000 directly into landlords and utility providers to keep families in housing between March 22nd and October 1st. As we've seen shifts in the CARES funding becoming available and the county being able to get things rolling, we've scaled that back, and now our focus is back on shelter. However, our very nature of establishing shelter involves working with volunteers, working in congregations and working with churches. Those churches aren't open. So for us to open shelter, which we did, we have to reduce our ability to serve families down to one family at a time. What we're coming forward with is a proposal of a $5,000 request to piggyback off of the Brevard Homeless Coalition's request of funding for an SOS shelter. That would allow us to double our capacity between now and December 31st so that we could work with multiple families for the length of time that they need in order to ensure that they're able to make it back into stable housing. We thank the county commissioners for awarding us funds in the past. We're a multi-year recipient of CDBG and CBO funds, and those have allowed us to grow into the programs that we have today, which is a three-tiered approach that includes prevention, shelter, and then stabilization to work with families after they've made it into housing to ensure that they retain that housing. And I've sent aside the document that includes the cost per unit analysis that we'd be looking forward, and that's all I've got for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have Drew Warren from Palm Bay. Mr. Warren.
So if I could, I'd like to say I'm here with the Homeless Coalition, and we'd like to present together. So if you want to do five minutes instead of three minutes each.
No, three minutes is good with me. These guys are getting tired.
Okay, that's fair.
So I'm going to defer first to Liz.
Okay. Thank you, county commissioners, county manager, county attorney, for having us here today. My name is Liz Alward. I'm the Chairman of the Brevard Homeless Coalition. Before I begin, I would like to introduce a few of my board members that are here to support us today. We've got Dr. Sally Shin, Jim Carlson, Ian Golden. We have Matt Reed, who I think may have had to leave to go back to work, and Drew Warren, who's with Community of Hope. So I want to share some of the challenges we've had, and as you know, we've all had. In fact, listening to the public safety speaker before me, there's no place that hasn't been impacted by this. So we support public safety, too. I want to talk about the SOS program, and Drew is going to assist me with this because this is a program that they started two years ago with the Coalition. It's a collaboration among several agencies: 211 Brevard, Brevard Family Partnership, Community Foundation of Brevard, Community of Hope, Coronavirus Mutual Aid Network, Daily Bread, Employee Community Fund of Boeing, Hope for North Brevard, Genesis House, Housing for the Homeless, NBC Universal and PNC Bank. I thought it was important for you to hear the number of different organizations that collaborate on these different programs that we have. So I'm not going to go through the whole PowerPoint. It's pretty self-explanatory. But the one thing I will tell you is the program this year alone has served over 65 households, and with the 74% of these households leaving shelter, going into permanent housing. And probably should have Drew give a little bit of an understanding of what SOS is and why it's so important, because it's hands-on into the community immediately.
So I'd like to start by just saying we started about, it was three years ago, and it was really targeting just families. And it's a very short-term shelter, which is where it gets its name, Safe Overnight Stay or SOS. And it was designed to get people in and out of shelter quickly and out into a permanent solution. We have been able to expand that because we have so many good local partners and local funding, been able to expand that to serve, in the last year, we served a lot of people, but specifically elderly as well as families with young children. But when COVID hit, and this is the important thing, I think when COVID hit, it was an easily scalable program, and I know we're down to time, but it was an easily scalable program that we were able to meet the needs of more people who were either COVID vulnerable or had been directly impacted by COVID. And so we took that program and we, where we had been serving two or three families a month, to serving 16 in a month. So we incurred a lot of extra expense during that time, and that's expense provided by local private funds. If you were able to reimburse some of those funds, it would make this program last longer and be more sustainable and help more people moving forward. So again, I'm with one of the local private agencies, Community of Hope, but we all work together. And I think this is a program that particularly highlights working together well as a full community, and I think that's what the Commission here should be supporting.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So with that, we are requesting $24,662, if you want to round it up to 25, we'd be okay with that, for reimbursement and keeping the program going till the end of the year, end of December. So thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Just a question for you all as well. I know Maria Moore has been with your group for some time. Is she still with you? I knew she was talking about leaving at some point.
Yeah, her contract ended in October. She's staying on part-time now until November, and she's going to be moving on.
For whatever it's worth, I just wanted to put in a good word for her.
Very good.
She's been stellar to work with.
Oh, no, she's stellar. She's been amazing, and we're going to miss her. So thank you.
Thank you all. All right. Next up, we have Matt Reed from Merritt Island, and then we have only two more speaker cards after that, and that will wrap us up. We'll have Keith Winston from Viera. Did you bring a furry animal, sir?
It's just me.
You better find one, otherwise we're not going to let you up. And then we'll have Dr. Michelle Dally from Malabar. All right. So Mr. Reed, if you want to come up.
Yeah, he's Eva.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
All right. So Mr. Reed is no longer here. In that case, Mr. Winston, I guess we'll give you a pass without the animal right now.
I'd just point out, technically, there's a lot of animals.
Yeah, Junie, would you please come up and join me?
You'll be our most attentive, most interesting speaker. So first of all, thank you, and congratulations to all the incumbents who won on Tuesday. I think most of you know the zoo. We have been around for 26 years, and we're really proud of our economic model. We're one of a handful of accredited zoos that is completely independent. And by that, I mean we're not part of any government body. About 90% of our income is earned income. About 10% comes from philanthropy. We are lucky in Brevard County. We do get a piece of the tourist development tax for capital, and of course, we apply for state grants and local grants, et cetera. I think you also know that, like everybody else, we were profoundly impacted by coronavirus. We were shut down during our two busiest months of the year, and since then, we've seen reduced attendance during the tourism season. It has been coming up. And also, we've seen certain income lines just disappear altogether. For example, functions, we just can't offer them safely right now. During that time, we have kept our programs and our jobs primarily intact because we feel they're really critical to the community. We've migrated to virtual platforms. We've done everything we can. We've sort of doubled down on the things that are safe to do. And our impact is fairly significant. On the economic side, our estimates now, it's about 1,000 jobs in Brevard County are supported by what we do there, probably about $60 million a year. And the community responded. We've had amazing private support since we've closed down, but we're still looking right now at about $2.4 million in reduced income for the year. We expect that's going to go down, go up by the end of the year. We had a $1.2 million PPP. So the $1.3 million you see that the consultant recommended is closing that gap between what the PPP provided for us and what we anticipate will be the true loss of income by the end of the year. So we can continue to do what we do well, serve the people in this community, serve people who will come and bring tourist dollars from other community, take care of sea turtles, take care of the linear park, all the things we do for the community every day. Thank you.
Keith, a couple of questions for you, sir.
Yeah.
And I appreciate your having met with me, I guess it was last week, to discuss this. I don't think the zoo could send anyone better or more qualified.
Thank you.
To sway us on this one. I'm looking at the request and the amount that qualifies being listed at 1.3 million. I don't necessarily have a problem allocating more in the future, and I know in the future we're going to be even more time-constricted than we are now. What would your thoughts be, were we to get a motion today seeking to set aside $500,000 now to reimburse and directing staff to reimburse as soon as the initial $500,000 is qualified by Tetra Tech and deemed to meet the requirements? And in the meanwhile, between now and the 22nd of December, so the next five, six weeks, continue to submit, or if you have them ready now, submit the remainder of the expenses for Tetra Tech to evaluate so that we can give you half a million now and then come back December 22nd. Tetra Tech will have already vetted everything. You can already have the contract negotiated, and we can allocate some additional amount over and above that 500, depending on what other needs come up between now and then. Because I just, you know, I'd like to give the money to local groups instead of sending it back to DC, especially groups like the zoo that really do benefit the county as a whole. But 1.3 million, it just seems, in my opinion, and you may have the votes anyway to pass the whole thing, I don't know. I just don't feel comfortable today allocating that much. I would feel comfortable with half a million now with the understanding that can be reimbursed as soon as it's approved, but the remainder, I'd like to revisit in December.
Well, obviously, we're going to be grateful for whatever we get. I want to be very clear. No one counts on this money going into a crisis. It's all been a moving target. We will be grateful, and that will make a difference. We're trying to fill a true gap, and our calendar year ends the end of this year, so that leaves us with a lot of uncertainty. It's not that we wouldn't be grateful for half a million. We would be tremendously, we'd love more assurance than that. We know you guys have tough decisions to make. So I can't make your lives that much easier. We certainly would love the whole, you know, 1.3, that would be tremendous. That puts us into next year an ability to move forward with some confidence, but we're not going to turn it down if we're given that opportunity.
So that half billion would make a meaningful difference to the zoo, then?
It certainly would. I don't want to mislead you in any way. The 1.3 completely changes our outlook for next year. That allows us to make sure we're not going to make any more cuts for staff or do any of those things that right now are under consideration.
I appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Winston?
No, I just wanted to make the comment that if they qualify for 1.3, I'm all in favor of giving them 1.3 at this point. We need to disperse this money. We've been sitting on it for an awful long time. We need to get it to the people and the organizations that need it the most, and I think we've heard from a number of them today that we can consider. And if they've already been vetted for 1.3, then I don't think, any reason not to give it to them, but I'm just one person.
Anything further?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Please.
This is an organization that, recall, is trying to fundraise for 10 million, or wait, 70 million, right? 10 million from us, 70 million for an aquarium. So maybe if they were to focus in on the core, they wouldn't have that gap of a 1.3, which doesn't sound very much. But this goes back to the very fundamental thing. Is the zoo a core function of government? If we had an extra $1.3 million, I don't think it's a bad place to give. It drives tourists. It's not a bad organization. But that is 1.3 million that is not going to EMS transport. That is $1.3 million that is not going to fire medic dispatch. That is $1.3 million that is not going to the jail corrections, countywide BCSO. These aren't my numbers. These are the numbers provided on Slide 28 by the County Manager. Mr. Chairman Loeb, you've mentioned it five times. I was 100% in support of sending this back to Washington, DC. Make no bones about it. However, as Mr. Abate has said multiple times, that the CARES funding requirement has changed. He outlined a way in which we could create a public safety fund and put in the amount of whatever, up to 75, if we had it, up to $75 million. So as CARES qualifications have changed, so has my opinion. I am not, no longer in favor of sending it to Washington, DC. I'm in favor of it going to both Brevard County Sheriff's Office and Brevard County Fire Rescue in total. But if, I respect the opinion of the board, if you think pandas and parakeets are more important than fire rescue and the sheriff's office.
Again, I'm not going to get into a circular back and forth. I don't think it's a choice of either or. We don't spend 70-something million in fire trucks. You mentioned that, you know, if we allocate money to another entity that we would potentially, or at least you alluded to the potential that we might be foregoing buying fire trucks. We don't spend anywhere near that.
Mr. Chair, I go, but these aren't my numbers. These are the County Manager numbers, or Ms. Hayes' numbers, 28. We have, and that was just one of many examples, but fire EMS, fire medic dispatch, a potential total of 16 million. Countywide EMS, transport, a total of 12.3 million. Jail corrections, countywide BCSO, 46 million bucks.
So you're talking about expenses, many of which, or perhaps even the bulk of which, we've already budgeted for and already funded for this year?
That is...
How is that something that we're going to forego?
These are capital expenses. These are capital expenses. These are capital expenses that we wouldn't have to pay for in future in future budgets.
If they've already been paid for, I don't know why they'd be showing up anyway.
They have not. This is capital, this is capital expense. If we were to use it, as Mr. Abate mentioned, we can put it in a public safety fund, which would allow us to then spend it on public uses, such as, and fire trucks is one example of them. So is it a binary decision between public safety and parakeets? Absolutely, because there is less money than what we have, the potential according to not, these are not my numbers again. These are the, I just, I've never fought so hard for, I usually am on the other side of of funding for the sheriff's office as well as.
Sure.
Fire rescue. But I think that this is now the time, and every dollar we expend is a dollar that is not going into that legally permissible public safety fund.
So is is your thought, because I just want to kind of take this out a step further, and I apologize, I'll try to keep this as brief as I can, but is your thought that we could offset the taxpayer burden next year with respect to BCFR and potentially lower taxes? Is that what you're proposing?
I've never made the, when I was in the legislature, I talked about lowering taxes. It didn't go very far. And as a county commissioner, while I would love to say it, I don't think it would be responsible us as policymakers when we have an infrastructure system that is not up to par. So you've never heard me once say, I'm here to lower taxes. I think those monies could be used in other areas, and this is an example where I think that the jail corrections, countywide BCSO, fire EMS, fire medic are more important than the zoo. And if the board disagrees with that, then I respect that. But we have a way to get money into a public safety fund that allows us to use these CARES dollars for capital expenses that go to fire, EMS, and jail. And and this is not, this is not a an unending amount of money. This is a pot of money of a little over $50 million with just with those three expenses of about 75 million.
I mean, I'll just leave it at this, you know, this is not, you get to pick an entree, and you could only have one. If we're talking about, you know, my proposal was 500,000 for the zoo instead of the 1.3 that they requested or qualified today, I still am absolutely in support, and I'll just say it bluntly, of putting eight digits aside, a substantial double-digit percentage of what we have remaining aside in a public safety fund to be used for that purpose. We're talking about a small fraction of the overall pot, and I don't know why it's being couched as an either or when that's not what we're forced to do. We can do substantially one and then do a small amount for any others that we choose to do. I mean, that's permissible.
I don't, I don't want to be confused. $500,000 is a lot of money. We went through a great deal of debate, and it pained me to say that the 800 extra thousand dollars went to the Brevard County Sheriff's Office was not a critical need, in my opinion. So the difference is 500,000 for zoo, put in perspective, that is the bulk of the critical need declaration that this board had to make. So it is certainly not a trivial amount, whether it's part of, you know, a million dollars or whether it's the part of 55 million dollars. I think each one of these dollars is precious and should be used accordingly, and I just don't think it's to an organization. The zoo is that organization that is out there trying to fundraise for another animal park.
Could I address that? No, we're not.
Just very, very briefly, sir.
As we mentioned at the time, we're not in the act of fundraise state, and we said that when we came before you. We've delayed that because of the COVID crisis.
We'll be in the near future act to raise money for another organization, another quasi-zoo.
I agree with you, Mr. Chair. We can do both.
All right, so Mr. Any other questions for Mr. Winston? All right, next time, please, sir, bring an animal.
Okay, I'll do my best.
All right, last but not least, we'll have Dr. Michelle Dally from Malabar.
Yep.
Thank you for your patience today.
Yep.
And not the the furry variety of patients.
No worries. Can I take this off to speak?
Yeah, as long as you're six feet away.
Is that okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am Dr. Michelle Dally of the veterinarian type of doctor. I'm here to propose a program. It's a small program, but I believe it fits into the mission of the CARE dollars. I am proposing to provide pets of elderly and disabled Brevard County residents with free or greatly reduced veterinary house call services during this time of COVID. I call it the Stay Safe and Stay Home Program. Even before COVID, it could be difficult for these populations to ensure their pets received appropriate care. Veterinary costs are at an all-time high, as I'm sure a few of you have noticed. Public transportation will not transport animals unless they are documented service animals, and handling an animal under high-stress conditions is difficult for the most able-bodied persons. With the coronavirus, the difficulties have only increased, and for these at-risk populations, the difficulties include succumbing to the novel coronavirus, a hazard that should be minimized in any way possible. For the past three months, I've been working with such organizations as Daily Bread, Volunteers of America, and the South Brevard Sharing Center to provide free outreach veterinary services to pets of the homeless. So I worked with the Brevard Homeless Coalition to go on outreach with them once a week, and every time we encountered pets, and there are a good deal of them, dogs and cats, I vaccinated, I've done blood tests, including some thyroid tests on some pretty large pitbulls. And in one case, a gentleman had a 10-year-old boxer he inherited from his mother who died, and the boxer could not eat. Its teeth were in such bad shape. So I was working, I was being funded by the National Street Dog Coalition, who funds care for homeless, pets of the homeless, and we got those teeth, actually, all but three of them had come out. But we got those teeth fixed, the dog is eating. The gentleman who lost his job because of COVID is forever grateful and started crying on the spot. So it really can make a difference. The more I work with the homeless, the more I become aware of the additional populations who could be served by at-home visits, featuring examinations, vaccines, blood tests, and the like. The Street Dog Coalition would not be the appropriate sponsor of a program like that because these people don't sleep outside, and that's sort of the criteria that the coalition's mission requires. I am suggesting providing services and medication to pets of high-risk COVID populations who are housed. And if the county has COVID dollars to spend, this would be a clearly beneficial program that would greatly reduce risk to seniors and the disabled.
Doc, if you could wrap it up, please.
I'm done.
All right. Hey, there you go.
Hey.
Has this been something that's been eval, Mr. Abate, or we submitted?
No, this is the first I've heard of it.
I emailed each and every one of you to your emails on the your website. So, and that was a couple days ago.
All right, I appreciate it. Any questions for the doctor?
Not to you, because.
Okay, no, that's fine.
All right, thank you all. So that's that's it for public comment today.
Sure.
There are a couple ways, I think logically, that we can go through this. I'll give you the suggestions, and then, you know, if you like one, we'll go with that. If you have a different idea, we can do that.
Mr. Chair, before you get started, you had mentioned the port, and that's the only thing we haven't talked about. Can you talk about that first?
Yeah, sure, I can go over that briefly.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess, I apologize, this wasn't included in the sheet that I provided to the clerks. This is something that came up a little bit later. It just hadn't occurred to me until we got a little closer to this meeting. I did not have time to put this together. But the port has received, as I understand from at least one port commissioner, no state or federal COVID relief whatsoever. Other ports, like Miami's port, for instance, exist as either county or city departments, or at least under the county or city umbrella, and have had CARES allocations to them as a result of that from those those different governmental entities, those local governments. Port Canaveral, just like the Parish Medical Center, is a taxing district. Port Canaveral is a special district. It didn't receive any allocation. So with zero cruises over, I don't know how many months it's been at this point, but many, many months, it's entirely possible that they have to, they will have to levy taxes for the first time, at least since I've been in Brevard. It's been, I think, decades, perhaps, since they've had to levy any sort of tax. And that would cover not just Port Canaveral, that would go, you know, into the Barrier Islands and potentially, or it would go past the Indian River into the mainland, hit Cocoa, hit Rockledge, hit a lot of areas, potentially. Port St. John, I think, may even be in the the taxing authority. So it's not just Port Canaveral. It would encompass certainly, if not the entirety of my district, the substantial majority of it. It would eat into District One. I don't know how far it eats into the other districts, if at all. I'd like to set aside some amount of money, depending on how we allocate other things. If we have between 7.5 and 12.5 million, I think that would be enough that it might make a difference in allowing Port Canaveral to submit qualifying expenses in the hopes of either helping them avoid instituting a tax or alternatively helping them lessen any tax that they have to institute. They certainly have not been doing well financially. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone, to the commission over there. I'm very happy I'm not serving on that commission now because we're in a much better position than they are financially. So that's my suggestion with respect to Port Canaveral. I'm not saying that we offset the entirety of their expenses. I mean, we could, we could eat up everything we have doing that, but I think a meaningful amount, 7.5 to 12.5 million, would be, you know, would be stellar in terms of helping them. I know that they will be submitting expenses, at least according to one of the port commissioners that I spoke with, and I did speak with multiple of them. So I don't know where other folks are with that.
You know, I, may I?
Please. Yes, ma'am.
I'm good with that. What I was thinking is, at one time, I know we had talked about discussing Stuart, they never put in anything, so we had talked about a 15-million packet.
Yes.
What if we give five to each hospital and then five to the port, and that would distribute those funds?
I, I mean, I'll just tell you where I'm at with it, and then I'll kind of give you my pitch as far as the couple of ways we can go through this after this, but I think we need to address everything individually and see where the numbers are.
I would support that. If we did both hospitals in and then brought that in, that would be what we talked about before.
I don't mean to interrupt. I think we're going down a rabbit hole here. I mean, then what's to stop us from supporting every city, every municipality? Everybody's been hit. I mean, the port is a taxing authority. Again, I think we've got to be careful because then every, every city would have, would have the option to come to us and say, we want seven to 12.5, seven and a half, 12.5 million. I've seen their budget. I've seen how much they pay the director. I mean, they're not always making good fiscal decisions, in my opinion, and I'm not trying to pick on them. I'm sure they would say the same about us, but they're a governmental entity, and it's sad, it sucks for them, I get it, but it sucks for us, too.
Well, really.
I, nobody's ever contacted my office to pitch a case to me about this, this, these kind of dollars. I mean, I know it's, you don't have to be a rocket scientist, and you can just watch the news to find out their revenue loss, but nobody's gave, given me a compelling case as to why we should hold out on that, those kind of monies. It's just my two cents.
And I think I made in short order the compelling case that they may have to tax otherwise, and they may have to tax anyway, and that it may reduce it.
I'm glad you have, but you're not them. Nobody's ever contacted me, so.
No, we don't have Health First here pitching anything either, so by that logic, we shouldn't allocate anything.
Well, Health First knows I can't vote, so.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
I think all we need to do is look at the budget of the port. First of all, they pay their chief executive a ridiculous salary of $386,000 plus, plus bonuses. So I'd like to certainly, before we hand over 5 million or 10 million or 12 million, whatever it is, I'd certainly like to know whether or not they took some sort of cut. But you can't go there without noticing the $23 million transcendental thought tower that has hundreds of thousands of dollars of chameleon-colored paint. Yes, they're in bad shape. They didn't plan ahead, and if we hand these folks dollars, we are taking away from the businesses right across, and I can't believe I'm sticking up here for the hoteliers. You're putting me in the worst position possible, but the hoteliers decided they wanted to put parking spaces there, and, and the port got mad that they were busing folks in. So it seems very difficult that we would be handing money over to a government agency that is in direct competition with private enterprise that is going through tough times right now. So in other words, we've been taking tax dollars from private to give it to public in direct competition. It's ridiculous that we would hand Dollar One to a port, and they had plans for an amphitheater that's coming up, and they were, they were not very kind to us. I don't know if you recall when it came to Jetty Park about the turnover. This is not an organization that is friendly. This is not an organization that has played ball with us, and I wouldn't support Dollar One to, to, to an organization that one of their board members said that Captain Murray is a quote-unquote "a rainmaker" and that he should be paid accordingly. So if they're down 50%, I'd certainly like to know whether or not his salary would down 50% with the financial hit that they took. But I'm very.
Give me a second, Tobias. I want to know how you really feel.
Yeah, that's right.
You know what? I need some of that transcendental thoughts right now and that chameleon color. I'm not making this up. $23 million for, as much as I say we waste, there, there is not a monument out there that, I don't know if they're still paying on that, but I certainly don't want any county tax dollars doing this. Plus, recall, this would be, and, you know, I never play this geography game, but this is the first time I'm going to bring it up, Mr. Chairman. Sorry. This is two taxing authorities that are in the north part of the district. There's nothing in Commissioner Zanardi's mind. We don't have Myra. We don't, we don't have a port that would, that, you know, you're saying should get money. We don't have a hospital system that has that authority. So, you know, if we were going for an equal distribution of dollars, this certainly would not be the way to throw, you know, $5 million at, or 10 million or whatever the hell at the port and another amount at, at Parish.
So here's the thing, and I don't disagree with your initial thought that it may be good, or in your case, you think it may be bad to hand the money over to this organization because you don't want to help the organization. Fine, to heck with the organization. I'm talking about the constituents who otherwise would be taxed, or the constituents who otherwise would be taxed more. Whether you love or hate who they, who they have as their CEO, it doesn't change the fact that they are hemorrhaging money left and right, unlike the cities, because they've been totally shut down. As far as property tax mileage, that's not where their money is at. This isn't like Rockledge or Palm Bay.
That's factually incorrect. Their, their shipping business is actually slightly up. So it's, it's not as though the port is completely shut down. It's certainly not. Have they lost money? Absolutely. But they're not completely shut down, and, and this isn't about helping at the expense. This is about money that would go into, again, a public safety fund. So this would be going into fire rescue, this would go into the sheriff, this would be going to the jail. That is the way I'd like to help people, instead of supporting a chief executive officer who makes $380,000 a year. And again, I.
So what you're saying is tax the constituents, then? That's really what you're saying?
That's a decision that those elected officials have to make.
And we're forcing them to make that, potentially.
No, we're not forcing them to do anything. They made decisions. They built.
Mr.
Yes, sir.
Since I can see the vote is right now two-two and I'm the odd man out.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not ready to make a decision. How about if we just move on to the next whatever?
Okay.
Because I can still be swayed either way.
Okay, well, yeah, that's fine. So here's what I would suggest. We can do it one of two ways. I've gotten, I've distributed a sheet that had some potential motions I'd make. I know Commissioner Zanardi had a sheet that she distributed. I believe the clerk's gotten copies of both. Or was it Commissioner Tobias?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
The spreadsheet, was that yours?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. I misspoke. We can address them in that order and then we can see what the county manager wants to do, or we can go in the order the county manager listed it on slide 27. Yeah, let's do that. And then before we do that, Mr. Bate, you had, I believe there was some proposed motion you had earlier that you wanted with clawbacks or something?
Yeah, it was, it's at the end of your, there were a couple. One obviously was to be the board direction on the allocation of the funds which you're going to address as you've indicated. I would like a motion, if the board so chooses, to authorize that we require with any sub-receipients that the county has a grant agreement with or gives any funds to, to have a clawback provision that they agree to reimburse the county for any care funding provided that is determined by a county or a Department of Treasury audit for expenditures that are found not to be utilized in accordance with federal statutory or requirements or Treasury guidelines. And additionally, as part of that, that the subsequent, that any sub-re recipient would be required to reimburse for any funds that are awarded by any other agency that could be used to cover the same costs.
So no double-dipping?
Yes, no double-dipping.
Much to approve.
I'll go ahead and second that, Commissioner Pritchett's motion. Any discussion on that? And just before I call the question, I want to make sure you're contemplating that as to each and every sub-re recipient with whom we've not yet contracted?
And that's everyone who is either a, yes, county government, anyone receiving over $50,000. That would apply to the charter officers, municipalities, the school, the, any of these organizations or entities, yes.
All right, at least I just want to make sure we all understand what we're voting on. So any discussion further on that hearing? No, I'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
And does that give me the authority to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, then, these agreements?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any objection to that? Unless there is, I'll just kind of leave that be. All right.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, you had on your thing, and I'm not sure if it's going to get brought up again.
Yes.
That's why I wanted to see why you crossed it off, the mutual link, because I was like kind of interested.
I'll refrain from commenting too much on that. If someone else wants to bring it up, I'll certainly entertain any motions that are made.
Okay, because I have a question. I just, why did you pull it?
I really prefer not to get into it in the meeting, but I decided that I didn't want to push that myself.
Okay. Can I ask a question about it?
Sure.
I saw, you know, I was asked, and I guess Tetra Tech said it didn't qualify?
Yeah, I'd be happy to give the commissioners a copy. You know, if you, you may recall, were we talking about mutual link? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, and let me just hand this out if I may, so you have the information, and that's what would be important for me. What happened is back in, at the end of June, the sheriff had written something about, hey, maybe you should look at that. And you remember that we, Doug Waller was here and the board asked us to do that, and so we did. And staff from Public Safety, I think, spoke to people from Tetra Tech and, excuse me, from Mutual Link and then sent it to Tetra Tech. This is the analysis that was done at that time and you can see that they said it was a high risk now. If the, you know, and we just want to make sure that all board members were aware of this and you had that information. I did not provide it to you previously because honestly, I didn't know before today that this was still, could be an issue that anyone would be interested in.
Well, I just know that like Madison County had used it, I think New Hampshire, I think the whole state uses it and...
Yeah, I can't tell you for what purposes. All I can tell you is for what I know that we did, and that's all contained in this analysis. And so I think we were pretty thorough with Tetra Tech and of course, the board could still choose to, you know, want to do this. This was, you know, this is up to the board, obviously. This was not a staff-initiated, and I don't know really what the sheriff's position is on that, you know, at that point.
Can I throw in a question?
Please.
I think Sheriff Ivy had liked this, so I was thinking, if he's out there, if we allocate, like you said, these funds to the sheriff to do cares and COVID thing, he would be allowed, if he thinks this is appropriate for him to do his job, then he would be able to do it and we wouldn't have to have the same concerns. I know we're paying Tetra Tech, but even if they did something wrong, we're still obligated if there's a problem to have to cover funds. Whereas if you give the money to the sheriff's department and he's using it for public safety and he deems this as something, then that kind of is an easier path for him.
If I'm hearing you correctly, then part, if the board chose to give either part of the initial funds that we talked about, that 8.8 million, or part of a public safety pool, if you choose to do that, to the sheriff and he allocated for that purpose because he thought it was appropriate and it related to COVID, et cetera, or not, he could do that, yes, absolutely.
So that's absolutely appropriate and we don't have any liability issues.
And let me just say one other thing that I think is important for me to just say with this, is that there are other costs which are recurring costs, for example, staffing. Those are not even considered. Those are dependent costs. So if you did something like this, you have to look at additional costs that are not part of what would be cares funded, because it would be in the future after January 1, both in terms of licensing fees and staffing costs, which I think are rather significant, but I just want to make sure that at least I shared that with you. I just want you to have all the information you need to have, and then of course, staff's ready to follow any direction you choose to give.
Mr. Chair?
Please, sir.
The motion that we just passed, the agreement that would obligate the vendor to cover the cost, tell me how that would work if we went through with this project and it was deemed in such a way. How would you draft that document, assuming that they would be willing to sign it?
Well...
Would that protect us?
You know, we would go with, you know, that would be something I would speak to the county attorney's office, because as you will see in the version we gave you, Tetra Tech has told us this is a high-risk item. So if the vendor agreed that, you know, if we funded them for something and it was determined through any audit that it wasn't qualified, they'd be required to reimburse us those funds.
But that would be the decision of the vendor to make that decision?
The vendor would have to make that decision. And I don't know, I don't want to speak for county attorney's office, but I believe that's where we would be.
I think you have to be concerned, number one. It would be my recommendation that we have a clawback with the vendor, but once you start down that road with a vendor like this, then you've got to, if this were somehow de-obligated or the Treasury came back and said, "No, sorry, you can't do it that way," you get the money back, but then you've still got, if there's, it's been installed and all that's gone forward, then you have to figure out, how do you undo all that? Do you undo it? You're going to have wiring, all kinds of things in place. As it was my understanding and talking with Mr. Wallace, that because the number of cameras involved, because that's what you're, part of what you're doing is deploying cameras around the county, you've got to have the people to monitor it. That's not a one-time cost. That's an ongoing personnel cost as well as the licenses that go with that. This is not a one-time expenditure of whatever the quote was of $900,000.
Thank you. If you'd like, Sheriff.
So as the county manager said, Chief Waller showed, appeared here before and talked about the value of mutual link, and it has a tremendous value. In fact, we use it in our schools. It provides a common platform for all law enforcement, all public safety to communicate on. What we're essentially talking about is a system that would tie in, not only the port, but the EOC, all of our local police and fire departments could be tied in. And it uses existing systems that it would tie in with. And certainly, other components could be added, but what we're talking about from the initial phase is being able to tie in already existing systems, put them on a common platform so when we have an emergency, whether that's a hurricane, whether it's any type of crisis or even specifically what we're dealing with right now in COVID, it gives us that ability to do just that. And as I said, we've used it in the schools. We are absolutely not only satisfied, but we are very happy with the system.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr.?
Sheriff, so if we gave you an appropriate amount of funds, you would feel like, from your department, this would be a good expenditure for you to fill out of those funds?
With what we're talking about in the big picture of things, you know, and the money coming to public safety, that would be something that I would definitely look at and want to move forward on.
Okay, sure.
Certainly, I want to be clear that the money that we've already talked about, the eight million that's already allocated for, that would be in addition to that.
Right, this would be another amount of funds, okay.
Sheriff, the one thing I'll say, and it's not specific to this, it's to anything that's used out of that public safety fund, if that's the direction the board goes to, please don't enter into contracts in which you don't have some level of protection from clawback.
Yes, sir.
Because if you come back and we have to deal with that, and I don't care whether it's mutual link or something else.
Right.
I'm not going to be very happy to see the request, because we're going to be obligated to make you hold at the end of the day.
Yeah, and commitment to that, anything that we're doing, we would work with our county manager on and certainly the county staff to accommodate.
I appreciate that, sir.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
All right, so I guess we'll go ahead, we'll start page 27. We'll just start from the top and work our way down.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Commissioner?
Can I start with the left, since it changes the bottom line number? Can I start with the left-hand side of my spreadsheet? It actually precedes the green one that I handed out.
It's up to the board how they want to do it. I prefer, because I know Commissioner Pritchett mentioned earlier, which I'm comfortable with, just starting with 27 and working our way down.
I, that starts with a set number, that 51.1. This would actually provide us with a four-point, I just want to see if the board is on board with additional 4.7 million.
Do we have the slide that we can show here? I just want to make sure we're all looking at the same thing.
You mean for the schools?
From the, for the schools. Yeah, the one that I handed out.
Is that not this?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chair.
So look at the school. I think he's most concerned about that.
So on the left...
Are you just talking about the school board reassigning?
Yes, yes, sir.
Oh, I apologize.
My stuff, the District Three plan, is all at the end, so I'm, yeah, that should come at the end if there's any money left over. This would be prior to that stuff. So we, so we evaluate with your indulgence, this would take a second.
Are you just talking about the 4.7 million? I just want to make sure we're not getting derailed on this.
Well, we asked the school board what may meet cares. They provided us with a list of about seven, seven and change million dollars. We've expended 2.876 million dollars. My suggestion here is we reassign 4.7 million dollars from the school board into the unassigned portion that we're about to do. Since this request went in, the voters of Brevard County saw fit to put one-quarter billion dollars into public schools. So this $4 million, I think, could be better spent in such a, in such a way that, on public safety. So I don't...
Does this have to do with them being a taxing authority?
And they certainly exercise it quite a bit.
In part.
I'm sorry, I had to go there. Well, I'm happy to consider that. I would like to give Dr. Mullins at least a chance to address that before we get too deep into it. I really have not firmed up a decision one way or the other, but I'd like to at least give them the opportunity.
And to be, to be clear of that, the top bit incurred, either we have committed to spend that or we already have spent that. That would be the PPE. This doesn't include the fancy Apple iPads and the laptops and all that, all that other stuff, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we're talking the 4.7 and change million?
Correct.
All right, Dr. Mullins, if you could just keep the comments confined to that portion, I would certainly appreciate it, sir.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and...
Do you have a copy, sir?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, I do, thank you. So first, thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for your early support and approval for Brevard Public Schools to be an authorized agency to work with the county on the CARES Act. Also, my appreciation to county manager, Bate, and his staff. They've been working very closely with us for the last few months and have been very helpful and very supportive, so thank you. And if I may use this public opportunity to thank the vast majority of Brevard's voters who supported Brevard Public Schools, request to extend the half-cent sales tax for capital renewal, infrastructure, security, and technology. These expenditures that are listed here are completely separate and are not a part of the funds that would be generated through the revenue of the half-cent sales tax. We have provided to the community a allocation of those dollars. They've all been prioritized based on comprehensive assessments in the areas of facilities to address failing infrastructure as well as security needs and technology needs. Not included were, are, not included are the technology requests that are part of the 4.7 million dollars. So what you see here are above and anything we'd be able to fund for, from the sales tax, and we haven't begun to receive the sales tax funds, and those won't be assessed until January. And then these expenditures would directly support our students in meeting their learning needs as we're all working together through the demands of COVID.
I appreciate it, sir. Commissioner, I'll just tell you where I'm at with it. I'm not comfortable eliminating the entirety of it, but I am comfortable eliminating a portion of it on the basis that their sales tax did in fact pass. I understand that the comment was made that they're funding different things and that may well be, but that doesn't mean that there can't be a reprioritization following that tax having been imposed. What would you suggest are the most important for you to see stricken from that so that we free the funds up that would be least impactful perhaps for the school system? And we can invite Dr. Mullins to comment on that if you'd like.
I'm sorry, if you can't find 4.7 million out of a quarter-billion dollars.
I'm trying to work with you, but I need a little...
I really, I really, I really appreciate it, you know, Apple iPads, that's really cool.
No, for pre-K and kindergarten.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, you can go on Amazon, get an Amazon Fire one for 70 bucks right now.
Okay, so I'm with you. So let's say we strike the five-point, I'm sorry, 2.56 and change million for those. Are the rest that troubling to you?
In all honesty, the $240 million is troubling for me, but to add another, voters decided that that was the correct way to go, aggressive tax. But I have no problem with 2.8. That's PPE. I think that that's probably part of our responsibility. There's some food in there, which I think is another great way to spend those dollars. I just don't believe the 4.7. Again, guys, if we free up this 4.7 million, we can give this to pandas and parakeets. So just think about this, you know, just we've got to prioritize. Trying to think of animals that...
Are you trying to convince people? Are you trying to?
I'm just trying to think of animals that begin with P.
I'm happy to, again, where I'm at, I'm happy to free up the 2.56 and change million for the Apple iPads for pre-K.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bate, when you gave this to us, you gave us 7.593 million that are already obligated. Is that incorrect, then? Are these funds not already obligated?
Well, they were obligated in that we asked the schools to give us expenses that we then looked at and say, "These, as vetted, will clearly be eligible." And so they're only obligated to that extent, and I do know the school board is aware of that and Dr. Mullins is aware of that. So, you know, we use the term obligated in that sense.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am, please.
I know we can be a little ruthless sometimes, but the Apple iPads for the pre-K and kindergarten, is that because the children are working at home or?
It is to allow us to have a one-to-one device for our pre-K and kindergarten students. So every student, either whether they're in class or they're at home, it would allow us to equip them with that device. It is a tablet device because our littlest guys aren't ready to navigate and manage a mouse yet, particularly our distance learners, that we don't have the, as much opportunity to coach and guide them. So our technology team felt that is the approach that we have taken with our students.
So I'm sure you're going to fund that, whether we give it to you or not, because that's a good product for your students.
We're not in a position to fund that right now without the county care, without this CARES funding.
Okay, thank you.
So looking at this, Commissioner Tobias, it doesn't look like we're de-obligating anything.
Yeah, I...
Based on the explanation of the term obligated.
I very rarely, I very rarely have issues.
I mean, if someone...
But I don't, yeah, obligation, I'm just looking up, it's a moral, a moral commitment. We just asked the school board, what expenses did they think would meet CARES? And they provided us dutifully with $7 million. So it is up to us then to make that determination. Now, it is my understanding that we have either spent or partially spent 2.876 million dollars. Those are the ones at the top. This was run through Mrs. Hayes' budget office, so this is what is not yet spent. So my thought was to increase the 51.1 million by 4.7, thus giving us 55.8 million dollars to spend on others.
I'll meet your partway there. I'm happy to take out, like I said, that 2.567, and if they want to reallocate the remainder and change how they do that, I'm happy just setting that cap for them amongst and change how they do that, I'm happy just setting that cap for them amongst qualified expenses. So we changed the total from about 7.5 to about 5. If you want to make the motion, I think you may have some luck getting that passed.
Since the half, Mr. Chair, since the half penny also went to technology, as Dr. Mullins said, the last one is laptops. I mean, they may not be Apple, but...
You want to make it 4 million? I really don't want to go lower than that. I understand that they have their half cent, but it's not all coming in at once?
No, but it's coming in because it's a tax that's already in place, so they're collecting it right now.
Mr. Chair, I just want to point out, you're not speaking for me, so I'm in favor of this. So you guys make up your mind, make the motion, and let's take a vote.
Yeah. I mean, if you want to make the motion to...
You're in favor of what? I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
You're in favor of what?
Passing it as is.
Seven point one.
For the 7.5, whatever it is.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Mullins. When you got the extra sales tax to put on there in the ballot, did that increase your taxes, or is that having you just continue as what you've already been receiving in the past?
It is not an increase in tax, it is a continuation of the existing tax.
So it really didn't change your budget or add anything to it?
Correct. Our estimates are lower actually than what we anticipate we'll receive through December 30 of this year.
Okay, I'm struggling with some of these things too, because I agree, maybe we could do something different with the iPads. But I think these kids are having to work at home a lot right now, they're having to do homeschool. I don't know what to do with your budget. I think definitely, Commissioner Tobias, with you, the 2.8 is definitely appropriate. Maybe some of these things are, maybe we can split the new amount up some. I am struggling with the computers out of this as well. But I do have a big heart for the children that are having to work at home right now.
Ms. Pritchett, the 2.8, I'm good with.
I know.
Because we've already spent that, or we've begun spending that. So that's off the table, even if I wanted to do away with that.
Oh, you're going to break my heart thinking you didn't like some of that now, too.
No, no, goodness, no, goodness gracious. So anyway, whatever, we know where Commissioner Smith is. At this point, we're just going to spend it. Penguins, I thought of another animal.
I mean, I'll put it out there.
Text me if you can think of any more, I'll update you.
Can we hear from Commissioner Isnardi? I'd like to hear her thoughts on this as well.
I actually, and I'm sorry, but again, I think if every taxing authority and every municipality came to us and said, "Okay, we want a piece, we want a piece," and I think we've got to be careful. Obviously, and I hate to use the zoo, but Commissioner Tobias keeps bringing it up, but like the zoo and like the homeless coalition, they don't have the authority to tax. They just don't. So I actually like this plan a lot, Commissioner Tobias, because I think, you know, I know that as a parent, even at my best, when I could afford it, I never bought my pre-K or my kindergarten an Apple iPad, whether I thought it would be beneficial to them or not. I mean, there's things that, there's ways around stuff like that, and $2.5 million I just can't justify. I'd much rather see that money spent elsewhere, so. I mean, again, I think it's about prioritizing, and they have to prioritize just like we do. So I'm obviously fine with the 2.8 million, but I'd be more than supportive of eliminating this 4.7 million.
So it sounds like it's two to two, and I'm telling you, I'm not going to go the whole amount. I'll split the baby basically with this. You know, I'll happily second a motion, and you'll have a three to two vote, it seems like, if we strike the Apple iPads and laptops, which frees up about 3.5 million in keeping everything else that's in the plan that's been suggested. I think that's a fair middle ground, and if someone wants to go after me for being moderate about it, then they're welcome to do that.
So Commissioner Loeb, you like the additional, if we got rid of all of the electronic equipment with the apples?
I'm even happy if they keep the hotspots and the before-and-after supplemental staffing and the food service scanners, stylists, that 121. I would say, strike the 2.567 million and the 1 million that are the bottom two lines out of that 4.716 million or 4.717 million. So it would strike, in essence, 3.5 million from the total that is listed as obligated, even though it's not really obligated, meaning, the simplest way is, why don't we say that we would authorize reimbursement up to $4 million total? That's the cleanest way to phrase the motion. It's, I think that'll get a three-two vote here. I'm just, I'm not on either side of the fence with this, and I think that's the fair thing to do.
I'll split the baby with you on that one.
All right, may I have a motion to reimburse them up to 4 million, provided that those expenses qualify and are reviewed by Tetra Tech?
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
The peacocks, platypy, puffins, and porcupines, thank you.
I don't know how that has anything to do with that, but I appreciate the thank you.
Google.
No, they've been texting.
Oh, they've been texting you? Great.
I make a motion to reimburse up to 4 million.
And that's inclusive of the 2.8 whatever-odd million we've already truly obligated? All right, you'll second it? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wow. I'm surprised that worked. Okay. All right, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, the Commissioner.
All right, let's go ahead, and just in the interest of time, let's try to stick with the pecking order on page 27, starting with the individual assistance and food. I'll just throw out the motion just so that everyone has it, and I wanted to thank, before I do that, Rob Rains for sending an email. I understand he may have sent it to everyone supporting the proposal, and also having given us the unemployment numbers showing a decline in the local low-wage employment in the county since the beginning of the year. So the proposal is in accordance with the memo that I submitted during the October 27th Commission Meeting to allocate an additional $2.2 million over and above the already allocated $4.4 million to bolster the county's housing assistance program. As I mentioned in the memo, we'd be increasing the maximum per applicant, the funding cap from $7,200 to $12,500 over a 10-month period, and it would authorize the county manager and the chair to execute any necessary documents to implement this increase in funding.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
A couple of things here. Line one is individual assistance and food, and I'm looking, are we going off that, or are we going off your...
I'm just basing it on my memo. What I contemplate is housing, not the food side of things. If they need more in food, if he wants to bring an agenda item forward for the next meeting, I'm happy to look at that, too.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I've spoken with Mr. Golden, and things may have changed since, but he thought the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Golden, that the 2.2 would include the food, or...
I think what we contemplated is 2.2 for individual assistance and food, with the county manager having the authority to move funds in between the two programs.
That's fine.
And then...
Hang on a second.
And then one more question for Mr. Golden.
Please.
Mr. Chair, you mentioned briefly about matching with other grants and state. Would this, I know you weren't at your desk when I called you, thank you for answering your phone, would this jeopardize any of that other stuff, or would we all be in good shape for the other matching portions? Should we raise it to these amounts?
If, I am understanding the question, what we had talked about was that we have additional funds, as Frank mentioned in one of the slides, that come from other sources, and we are able to, and we do marry those together when we have the ability to do so.
And increasing it from the 7,200 to 12,500 doesn't jeopardize any of that marriage, correct?
It does not. It does not.
Thank you.
If you, in the meanwhile, can put on the screen the 29th slide review of board decision points, we have at least one Commissioner that doesn't have it. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I guess the question was whether we should pass item three now, and then we can deal with the rest of it. So I think that makes sense. Does anyone have an opposition to that? If not, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the county manager to transfer funds between the programs to maximize program benefits, including all necessary budget change requests.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Yeah, that obviates the concern as far as whether it's individual assistance or food. So I would ask for a motion to increase the funding to that pot, my 2.2 is outlined. Okay. I will go ahead and second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, so small business support, the 1.5 additional. Mr. Abate, I don't know if you want to just comment briefly on that?
Yeah, as I said during the presentation, we've spent 8.3 million. We have $700,000 that was obligated. We believe that, based on the current amount of application we're receiving and the grant amounts and how many we're able to approve, that if we continue the program through the end of December, our target would be to try to get up to 11.5 million. That's why we would ask for that amount. That way, we have that through the end of the year.
I'm in favor.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Commissioner Pritchett, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, schools, I think we've addressed that unless someone wants to go further on that. We're good? Okay, we'll move on. Parish Medical Center?
I make a motion.
Wait, 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 wait. I would like to see these reversed and do health first. And the reason is because I'm just looking at the table here, and we know we have one Commissioner that's probably not going to vote yes for anything, although he's surprised me to some degree. We have another Commissioner that can't vote on Health First, and we have another Commissioner that's had a little bit of a row with Health First.
On this item?
So I want to see what the Commission does with Health First before I make a commitment on Parish.
You're welcome to make a motion any way you want, but I, as we said, I'm trying to go through the order to keep this timely and keep us flowing.
Okay, well, I would like to make a motion to pass the $5 million for Health First.
Second. Commissioner Isnardi, you just simply need to declare your conflict and provide the paperwork to them.
Right now, okay. I have a conflict, a voting conflict, which I'm sure everybody here is aware of, but I'm not sure if the public is. So I'll fill out the proper form as I'm employed with Health First. Someone will be voting.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Fails two to two. All right, may I have a motion to pass the 5 million for Parish?
I make a motion to approve the 5 million for Parish.
I'll go ahead and second that motion happily. All in favor of allocating 5 million to Parish, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion fails two-three. So we'll move on to animal rescue groups. I've actually phrased this a little differently than is listed on page 27. So in accordance with the memo that I distributed on October 27th, I'd asked that we authorize the county manager who is designated to reimburse for qualifying expenses up to an additional $100,000 for both the SPCA of Brevard and the Humane, I'm sorry, Brevard Humane Society for a maximum total of $200,000 as a result of this board action. That's exclusive of $10,000 already applied for from the Brevard Humane Society through the county's small business grant program. This shall not, however, be taken to mean that the Brevard Humane Society will be able to double-dip and be reimbursed twice for the same expenses. Should the SPCA of Brevard wish to additionally apply for the small business grant program, they may do so, subject to its $10,000 limit for qualifying expenses. Motion also contemplates that the chair will be authorized to sign any necessary documents to carry out the Commission's direction on this item. Should either organization submit additional qualifying expenses, I ask that staff also be directed to bring back to the Commission at the 9:00 AM Commission Meeting scheduled for the 22nd of December, any such qualified expenses for consideration of allocating additional funding. If I could speak properly, that would help. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to grant them up to $190,000 more in funds.
190 between the two of them? So it would, I guess, for the 100, so SPCA, which hasn't applied for anything, would be eligible for up to 100, and then Humane Society would be eligible for up to 90 additional. All right, I'll go ahead and second that motion. Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I just had a question.
Yes.
Can you explain, you said this would be, I'm trying to vote with you here.
Yes.
And it doesn't matter, clearly.
Yeah, we've already got three in the affirmative, so...
You mentioned that this would be a savings to Brevard County Sheriff's Office when it comes to animal rescue, is that correct?
It offsets their costs. I did speak at length with Joe Hellebrand. SPCA in particular, largely as a result of their geographic location, takes animals directly from the sheriff's shelter. And, yeah, I see the sheriff is in the back there as well, so if he wants to come up, certainly we can hear from him. But let's finish the vote, because we're kind of in the middle of a vote. So we have three in favor, any opposed? All right, three in, so it passes.
I mean, yes.
Yeah, so you're a yes, and Commissioner Isnardi, passes 5-0. All right, Sheriff, I appreciate it, sir.
All right. Do you want to hear from Jenny Onatz? Give him a...
Oh, gosh. All right, so Brevard Zoo, again, my proposal was to set aside up to, to set aside 500,000 to reimburse the zoo for qualifying expenses after they're reviewed by Tetra Tech to ensure they qualify. It would authorize me to sign any necessary documents. Staff would be directed to forward qualifying expenses up to the 1.3 million, though, to Tetra Tech as soon as they're available, and they would be directed to bring back the item to the 9:00 AM BOCC meeting that's scheduled for the 22nd of December so that we can consider allocating an amount over and above the 500, depending on how things go in the future. By doing that, it would allow us to significantly help the zoo now and retain a portion of the requested funding to better ensure that we are able to meet unexpected demands over the next month and a half or so. If the costs don't occur and we otherwise are faced with potentially sending it back to the feds, we can allocate more, and if they do occur, we can deal with it accordingly. May I have a motion for that, or for any other action on this item?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to fund the entire 1.3.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Smith to fund 1.3 million now.
Second?
We have a second from Commissioner Isnardi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails two to three with Commissioners Tobias and myself and Commissioner Pritchett in the negative. So I don't know if someone wants to reconsider that motion for the 500 now, or if we want to move on.
I'll make a motion to ask for 500.
Okay, so we'll go ahead with the motion to set aside 500, as we detailed, from Commissioner Isnardi. I'll go ahead and second that. All in favor of that action, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, passes three to two with Commissioners Tobias and Pritchett in the negative. It's an interesting outcome. Let's see here. Mental health circles of care.
Commissioner.
Yeah, Commissioner, yeah.
I apologize. The updated number for circles of care for the mental health piece is 1,215,896.
All right, I don't know if we want to have further discussion on this, or if someone wants to make a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Please, sir.
May I ask, Mr. Golden, to give us the update, what the cut was? Was it a state funding cut?
The portion of this request is the state cut by 3% local agencies that are funded through a managing entity. That reduction equated to about a little over 300,000 to local mental health agencies. The additional dollars in here are specific to circles of care, telemedicine upgrades to allow them to do their infrastructure for telemedicine, and the staffing costs that Frank had mentioned earlier.
I don't know that it matters. I certainly would support the state cut of $300,000. I could not support the additional technological upgrades. So if you want to bifurcate the vote, I certainly would support the 300 or whatever that dollar was for the cut.
Could you list that, Mr. Golden?
The actual dollar amount we've been told is $300,896.
$300,896.
Mr. Tobias, let me throw this at you. I was going to ask for 500, just because, let me tell you why.
You don't have to, I'm for it. If you make a motion, I'd be for it.
Yeah, that one will pass if you put it forward, Commissioner Pritchett.
Make a motion for 500,000?
I'll second that. All in favor of allocating 500,000 to circles of care, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, we're doing good. Doing well, I should say. Aging Matters Meals on Wheels included in that. The listing here is 34,400. Has that changed as well, Mr. Golden?
It has. I was just given an updated number that adds an additional 40,000 to that, for a total of 74,400.
74,400. Okay, I don't know if someone cares to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, sorry.
All right, Commissioner Isnardi, got you on that one, Commissioner Smith.
74,400.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Tobias.
Can we, can I get a, just a, how do we come up with 70? I don't know how we came up with 30,000, let alone 70,000. Is this an increase due to COVID-related, or...
It's all, it all has to be COVID-related. These are increases related to their food programming. So it's wear and tear on equipment, it's an increase in their freezer size because of having to store, it's wear and tear on vehicles that are doing deliveries.
But to be clear, this is an increase to the line item of whatever we have in the budget of 60,000 bucks, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the motion was for 74,400. We have a second, as I recall. Any further discussion? Seeing that I'll go ahead and call the question as to whether to allocate 74,400, so 74,400 to Aging Matters, including Meals on Wheels. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we're doing well. Homeless Coalition, their request was for 24,662. Any discussion on that?
Commissioner, yeah, this one would also, if the board chooses to take what was presented as an additional $5,000 request and roll that in, this could be up to the 29,662. That was the agency that requests that came in during a public comment. For family, family promise.
Whatever you all are comfortable with, just tell me.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve $29,662 for the Homeless Coalition.
Mr. Commissioner Tobias, please, sir. And we have a motion from Commissioner Isnardi, a second, Commissioner Smith.
The family promise of Brevard mentioned, I think, one family, did they not?
Initially, when it first started, but they take in, what do they have?
I believe you said 16.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'll go ahead and call the questions to the 29,662 for the Homeless Coalition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I think I skipped the urgent care one, did I not, Ms. Bentley? I don't know how I did that. That was one of them that I've been pushing to. So I, I would ask, in accordance with the memo that I circulated to the board on the October 27th commission meeting, to authorize the county manager, his designee, to reimburse for qualifying expenses up to $5,000 per urgent care facility located within Brevard County, irrespective of number of employees, which I don't think that part's in there, irrespective of ownership, which is in there, irrespective of whether it's located within a municipality or an unincorporated portion of Brevard County, and also irrespective of whether the owner or owners have received other forms of assistance from Brevard County, with the very important notable exception that individual expenses may not be reimbursed more than once through any combination of grant programs, whether it's local, state, federal, or, or otherwise. And I'd also ask that the motion authorize the chair to sign any necessary docs. Would someone please make that motion?
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Sir.
This is, so if one of these urgent care clinics had already received the $10,000 small business, this would give them the opportunity for another 10,000, is that correct? Or another five, sorry, another 5,000?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And again, I have to declare a voting conflict because Health First owns some urgent cares through Advent, so I will not be voting on this, and we'll sign the paperwork accordingly.
All right, so we have a motion from Commissioner Pritchett. I'll go ahead and second that. So we'll, we'll have four commissioners voting on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Okay, so we took care of that. I think that's the only one I skipped inadvertently, right, Ms. Bentley? Okay, so we'll go back to tourism and marketing, which is a 3/4 million dollar proposal. Mr. Bate, anything to add with respect to that, sir?
No, I don't know if you want to hear anything from Peter Cranes, but no, I don't have any.
Commissioner Tobias, why do I feel like you have some questions on this one? I'm, I'm just going to call on you before you raise your hand. Come on.
This seems like an awful veiled attempt to make up for lost revenue that may have come out of the TDO, so on, I'm uncomfortable when it comes to that. Using these funds could be used directly to fight, you know, the pandemic. So I, I think that tourism, while important, certainly doesn't rise to the level of, of public safety, and I'm going to hopefully give the TDO some opportunities at the meeting on Tuesday to spend them more wisely, should they decide to do that.
I'm going to do something I may regret, but there's a gentleman from the Comptroller's Office who I respect relatively immensely here. I don't know if he cares to chime in with respect to his thoughts as to the legality, or if his office has a position with the respect to, with respect to the legality of this. And then Mr. Ellis is back there, too. Yeah, either, either or.
What, transfer money to the TDC?
Yes.
You know, transfer money all over the county, man.
Well, with respect to this one particular item, do you have any qualms with this, as far as the legality of it?
If we do, we'll let you know afterwards.
I'd like to avoid costing the taxpayers money in lawsuits and things of that nature. So if there is a concern, I'd, I'd certainly appreciate a heads up on it, because that may change how I vote.
We have no heads up on your list.
Do I need to turn this on?
Is it, is it green? There should be a little green LED.
I guess my only comment is I kind of share what the commissioner was saying over here. It just looks like you're replacing lost revenues. And then, of course, it would be up to the commission to decide that this is actually carrying out a purpose related to the COVID, the health and safety issues. That would be my only concern.
I appreciate that. All right, Commissioner Tobias, I'm, I'm sold on this one. This is one I was kind of iffy on earlier for that reason, so I, I'm not, not a hard one to sway with respect to this, but if someone else wants to make a motion, certainly I'll accept any motion made.
No, sir, but I, I do have a motion I'd like to throw out there right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Just listening to all the conversations, that each commissioner of every district be allocated 5 million to do what they would like to do. I would like to take 5 million and put it at Parish. You could give it to Health First. You could do the port, and then you guys could pick them, because I think that because of personal reasons, we overlook some things that I think are very important for us to fund. So I would just like to make a motion that each commissioner be given 5 million to allocate to their district on something that's appropriate COVID-related.
Commissioner, before I second that, would you consider modifying that to mandate that the distribution be to items that are evaluated and considered by Tetra Tech to be low risk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll second it in that case.
Yes, sir. Can I call the motion?
Second.
All right, too late, Commissioner Smith, I've already seconded it, sir.
I just, how much money's left over? I mean, we're just throwing millions of dollars around right here. And, and this, this creates all sorts of problem, obvious problems. So what happens if you wanted to do something crazy, like something I would want to do, and.
Pluck us from office.
Spend us, spend money on fire rescue that benefits the entire county instead of, say, an entity that's located exclusively within a commission district? I mean, it's time that we get out of our individual commission districts and start looking out what's good for the entire Brevard County here.
Commissioner, I.
When you create these pots of money, it becomes absolutely ridiculous. It's, it's got to be bad for staff. The leftover money, we, we found a way, we can put it in that public safety thing, and lord knows it'll go to fire safety and, and, and the sheriff, and the sheriff's office, but.
Commissioner, I, I really want to be nice to you, sir, and I really am trying to be diplomatic right now.
I just got to have an election, so I'm used to.
I, I really, I'm struggling with it, though, at the moment, because as far as making the pitch that we need to do things that benefit the entire county, the items that benefited a substantial portion of the county that didn't happen to have the same overlap with, with your district, you were very quick to dismiss earlier. So it, it just seems to me that really the argument is seeking to achieve the opposite, things that benefit District 3 or portions of the county that also include District 3, so it just strikes me the wrong way.
That argument, again, is, is completely flaccid, in so much as I want to give the.
A flaccid argument, sir?
It's cer, it's certainly not turgid.
I wouldn't know what that is.
I consider all my arguments turgid.
I caught that.
Yeah.
Oh, God, okay.
It's getting late here, and we have another meeting. Now, I've said, I've showed my cards off the table, I, at the beginning, I said it should go in the public safety. My, my, my money, if, if I'm given 5 million or whatever, will go into the, the public safety fund. I would hope everyone would do the same, if you want to hand this out. We, we just, we just did this. I, you, we gave $200,000 to dogs because it was important to you, and, and that's fine, but why, why are, why are we, I don't even know how much money's left.
Yes, it was important to me, but again, the two organizations weren't selected because I just happened to like them. These are organizations, both, that end up performing a service that would otherwise fall in the county. So, you know, look, I, I can tell you, I, I don't recall having given either of those two organizations a penny of my own money. I've given a lot of money to animal rescue organizations, but none of them have shelters, which is the reason those two were selected.
I, I'm going to lose, I got, I got this, I'm going to lose this one, Mr. Chair.
Well, we, we have a motion in a second.
Yeah, Commissioner Pritchett, how did you choose 5 million? Why not, why, why don't we spend it all? Why don't, why don't we, why don't we divide?
Well, because you're saying these are district-specific, and they are. So then there, there's an opportunity for other district specifics. This is important. There was so many personal things going on with this, on projects that should have been approved, so I thought this was really good. We can do what we need to do, that we feel is important in our own district, and, and if it's exactly what you said in the criteria, that it's low risk, and it's something that's really benefiting the community. So I, I really like this motion.
And, I mean, if someone feels compelled, Commissioner Tobias, for instance, to put this toward BCFR exclusively, there's nothing that precludes you from doing that. I don't see any issue with that. Mr. Bate?
You know, and I should have, you know, I fought myself on this, so let me, let me say one other thing that.
Sir.
When I did the presentation, I went through it all, and I skipped one, not one item, I mentioned it, but we didn't, the board didn't take action on it, and it wasn't really written here separately, and that was the $11 million, 11.2 million, that was the EMS transport going into the fire fund. I don't know if the board intended, wanted to deal with that issue, but when we went through the list, it wasn't listed there, so I forgot.
Okay.
I didn't think of doing it. With that, if, before you consider that, if you chose to consider that, that was 11.2 million. We have 49,604,683. That is currently, would go into whatever approach you guys want to do.
So what does that leave us as far as the amount after, assuming we allocate 11,136,356?
That would leave you, that would leave you 38 million, and if you did 5 million each, that would put 13 million, approximately 13 million into the public safety, and then whatever you did with the 5 million each, that, that number could go up.
Mr. Bate, I just want to be sure, because we were talking at various points in time, some in the commission meeting, and then us individually outside of the commission meeting, of doing BCFR as one pot, BCSO as another pot. I'm not necessarily opposed to combining them.
The 8, the 8.8 million would still be a separate pot that the sheriff would have.
Okay. But if we, because what I'm looking at is, I, I want to make sure, the, the one thing to me, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Pritchett, to kind of diverge from the, the motion that you put forth, I want to be absolutely certain that as to the county-wide EMS transport costs, we allocate everything that we're entitled to allocate for that. That benefits everyone.
That would be the 11.2 million, and we did not address that issue separately.
But we, certainly with respect to this, we have more than ample funding left over in order to allocate that, and still have money to, to look at. So, all right, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'm about as uncomfortable not knowing where we are financially. I need to see a spreadsheet with some numbers on it, because we're all over the damn place, and, and I don't like any of this.
Those are the numbers, those are the.
No, what I'm saying is where we are, because we keep messing with these numbers. I don't know how much money's left. I want to make sure.
We have about 38 million left, is that not correct?
If I can, we started out with 51.1 million. We've been keeping a tally, myself, Kathy, and someone in the budget office, Chelsea in the budget office. So I can give a recap. We allocated 2.2 in individual assistance, 1.5 in small business support. We unallocated 3,593,928 to the school, giving them a max of 4 million. We put 190,000 into animal rescue groups, 500,000 into the zoo, 500,000 into mental health circles of care, 130,000 into urgent care, 74,400 into Aging Matters Meals on Wheels, and 29,662 into the Homeless Coalition Family Promise of Brevard. So we are now at 49,604,683, with the 11,136,356 that Frank just mentioned for county-wide EMS transport, that would take us to 38,468,327 available. And I have it in a spreadsheet.
Sorry, I apologize, but we, we have a motion on the, on the floor with a second, so I, unless the motion's withdrawn.
I do have a question, Mr. Chair.
Very briefly, Commissioner.
I just Googled, Commissioner Pritchett, I just Googled strip clubs in Brevard County, and I see there's five, Dancer Royale, Pinups of Palm Bay, The Red Leopard, Lido Cabaret, and Bear Assets. My question, and cheaters, I'm sorry, I don't, I guess there's six. Would you be comfortable with me going to them and saying that we have cares dollars, and the board has authorized, the board, you're part of that, has authorized me to find out what you may be eligible for, and assuming that comes back, that, that we're eligible, you would be on the board for voting for? I don't, strip clubs.
What planet are you on with that? We're talking about hospital, hospital, port.
But you just gave discretion to do whatever, as long as it was.
No, it has to be, it has to be on low risk, and those are small businesses. If they already put in, that would be run through with, with whatever.
Well, if.
I'm going to call a question at this point.
Yeah, thank you.
This is just, I apologize, but I don't think this is productive. All right, so we have a motion in a second. This is to allocate or to authorize the individual commissioners to spend up to 5 million apiece. Did you say within their district, or do you care if it's anywhere in the county?
I don't care, anywhere in the county, but as you said, it has to be low risk.
Okay. Anywhere in the county, and my second stands with respect to that. It's got to be evaluated by Tetra Tech, found to qualify, and found to be low risk, not moderate or high risk. Within those confines, that's what we're voting on. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, passes 3 to 2 with Commissioners Tobias and Isnardi in the negative.
And, but we have 5 million now for our district, so I'll just say right now that I want my 5 million to go to.
Frank didn't do anything. Frank didn't do anything.
You can't do what you just did.
Why?
It's not your 5 million, or your 5 million, or your 5 million. That 5 million is not belonged to anybody that's at this board. Now, you're welcome to go home, make a 5 million dollar wish list, and bring it back to the board to approve, and then I don't care. If you vote 5-0, and you prove everybody's wish list more power to you, but none of you are empowered to pick out 5 million bucks worth of expenditures on your own.
Shannon? Is the board able to delegate that authority?
The board has the ability to delegate authority to an individual commissioner to make decisions of this nature.
Without board approval.
They just, they just gave board approval to do that.
Okay, look, we'll see you in court.
But.
Now, I, I promise you, we will see you in court on this one, because all I see is a 25 million dollar slush fund. Even with Beach and Riverfront, and you were here for that, and you were here for that, that still had to come before the board when they did the individual slush funds on Beach and Riverfront, and we finally got rid of that in the early 90s.
Well, they have stipulated that it has to be COVID-related, and it has to be approved by Tetra Tech as low risk. So, yeah, I appreciate your difference.
I mean, they can approve whatever. You cannot delegate that down to individual commissioners.
Shannon, let me, let me ask you.
To have the ability to, to spend that money.
Mr. Ellis, and again, I, I appreciate your viewpoint. We've got legal counsel here. I've got to go with the counsel that we have, who I've been satisfied with.
Look, we're, we're used to being in court with you, Brian, so it's no big deal, and we'll be back in court again, because you are not going to have 5 million dollar slush funds for every single commissioner in this room to spend as you choose.
If I may respectfully suggest that you at least wait until you see where the allocations go, because it may be something that's totally wholesome that you have no objection to?
If it's totally wholesome, then you all should vote on as a board, and you don't need to do it this way. You are, you are easily able to, each one of you come up with your 5 million dollar wish list, walk into here as a board, each present their 5 million dollars, and vote as a board to approve all five of those wish lists.
I, I don't disagree, but that's not what the board chose to do, sir.
Okay, but what you are doing is enticing to corruption when you have the ability to spend 5 million as you choose. If you choose, you choose, you choose, not you as a board choose.
I'll put this out there, to that end, anyone that reaches out to me asking for funds from this point on is going to have a, not a leg up, but a leg down in terms of their likelihood of receiving them. I'm going to reach out to the organizations or the entities that I, I think need the money, so as far as the suggestion, there's some enticement for corruption. I'm, I'm just, I'm not interested in that.
Can I?
Well, I don't know if you're interested in it or not. I can have a clerk come up here and say he wasn't interested in corruption either, till he got there and had the ability to spend the money as he chose.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Can I, let's just try this. I really know what we're trying to achieve. Let me try three motions and see if this works, and this, this could probably settle all of it.
I understand what you're trying to achieve also, Commissioner.
I know, so.
Well, tell, tell me what you're thinking before we undo things.
I'm going to make a motion to give 5 million to Health First, a motion to give 5 million to Parish, and a motion to give 5 billion to the port, and that's what we've been trying to do. I think that would, would solve.
Because then you vote as a board for what you want to do.
And we'll just, we'll just put on our big girl britches, our big boy pants, and we'll just do this and get it done, because we know that's where we're wanting to allocate it, and you can do.
This is like a circus.
It's extremely dangerous to have anybody at your power to spend 5 million as they choose of public money.
I don't know why you're looking at me.
I want to make a motion to give 5 million to Health First.
Well, my, my concern, Commissioner.
And I have to abstain from that, so I'm going on the record.
You do, you do.
My concern with that is since we've already, we've already delegated 5 million apiece, if that passes.
I'll pull that back.
But we've, we've got to have a motion to reconsider that.
I want to make a motion to reconsider.
Or rescind that vote. Just rescind that.
That's fine, that's your motion?
Okay, make a motion to rescind that vote.
That's your motion?
Make a motion to rescind that vote.
I'll second that motion. All in favor of rescinding the vote, authorizing each of us, and delegating the authority to spend up to 5 million apiece, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, let's...
I'd like to make a motion to give 5 million to Health First.
Have we not already had that motion?
Commissioner, could we amend that to COVID-related and approved by Tetra Tech?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we do that, is there not a prohibition in Robert's rules on having the same exact motion heard the second time during the same meeting?
This is going to be combined.
We don't seem to hit Robert's rules at all.
Ms. Bentley, I just...
Right, thank you.
I don't think we've ever in my tenure had the same motion come up twice.
We just did it the other night to Kurt, and he approved it after he denied it once.
Well, we actually had different individual motions. We tri-furcated something, as I recall.
Okay, I make a motion to give 4,999,000 to Health First.
That's creative, I like it.
And I just want to go on the record, because I have to abstain.
Second.
We'll just, we'll see that being a standing objection.
Subject to being COVID-related and invented by Tetra Tech.
Yes, sir, probably. Second.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Smith, as to Commissioner Pritchett's motion. Any discussion on it? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Fails 2 to 2.
Well, then we're going nowhere.
You want to try Parish?
It's not going to pass. That's what we had. We had everybody having their thing, but we all knew there were good things to do. And if we had the 5 million, we're going to do it anyways.
This is like a, this is like a circus.
Well, we really kind of need to figure it out. If you want to go back to the 5 million motion, we can do that again. I'll support that again, and I think we can all fund our respective causes.
Why not make a motion with all three in the same motion?
I'll vote against it. I'm just telling you, anything that includes that allocation to Health First, I'll vote against.
How do you really feel?
I'm just, I don't want you to waste your time on it. I mean, if you have the votes otherwise, by all means...
Well, and you can't, because it would be included, Health First would be included with Parish and the port, you can't vote on it.
Commissioner, respectfully, it ain't going to happen today.
Okay.
And that's okay, because one will suffer because of another's...
Right, exactly. So all three suffer.
I'm sorry, I make a motion for each commission to have 5 million that's appropriate for COVID funds to spend on appropriate projects. Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and second that again. I'll call the question. This is certainly almost comical. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, passes 3-2 with Commissioners Tobias and Isnardi in the negative.
But now we're forced to have 5 million for our district, so...
Sir, Commissioner Tobias, sir.
Thank you. My 5, so we can put it on the table, my 5 million will be going to that public service...
Public safety.
Public safety.
Yeah, fund we're going to create.
Fund, so add the 5 million, that way it'll serve county-wise.
Okay, so I want to make a motion that Commissioner Tobias, District 3, 5 million, and Commissioner Isnardi's 5 million that was allocated in the previous motion go toward the public safety fund? Does that sound...
No, no, we don't, we don't need that.
You don't need motions for that, if you just do it.
We do this individually. It's your 5 million.
Oh, Jesus.
So just throw it in the pot.
Do you need an additional motion to authorize either the chair to sign any docs or to authorize the county manager to sign any docs necessary to effectuate that action, Ms. Bentley?
It's already in the...
We've already made that motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's becoming a long day, I apologize.
And, and we can make a motion, I'm putting mine towards Parish Hospital, so you guys know right now.
No, no motion needed, but I think that's an excellent expenditure. All right, perfect. And as I said with respect to mine, I want to mull over this and not do this impulsively, although I think that was not at all an impulsive decision with respect to where that went, or your decisions with respect to where that went. I think those have all been excellent decisions, in my opinion, but I do want to think it over, and as I said, if someone reaches out to me seeking funds for this, partially for the reasons that Mr. Ellis identified, I'm not going to view that very favorably, so I do want to do some research on my own and determine where I think it's going to generate the most benefit for the county.
Mr. Chair? Sir? What's you thinking, Commissioner Smith?
I think we're all crazy.
Well, yeah, that, by virtue of being here, but where are you going to spend your 5 million, sir? Got any ideas? Tease us a little bit, sir.
Well, we've got half an hour till the zoning meeting, so...
Yeah, I'll think on it.
Okay.
5 million bucks, all of a sudden, that's...
That's a lot of, that's a lot of coin.
Yeah.
We need some ideas to get with me.
Don't call, Sheriff. No, I'm teasing you, sir. All right.
I think we're going to give poor Frank a stroke over here.
You did that a little while ago.
This has certainly been an interesting meeting, I'll say that. Anything further that we have to decide, Mr. Bate or Jill? What else do we need, do we need to look at?
Mr. Chair, do we need to create that public, do we need to create the dollars that aren't expended to be put in that public safety?